All to order, the special meeting of the Goodyear Planning and Zoning Commission for December 13, 2006. I would ask that you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregaled, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that all members are present, except for Ms. Loritano. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the special meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission held on November 29, 2006. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for the minutes.
So move, Mr. Chair, to approve November 29, 2006, Commission meeting minutes.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Ms. Osborne. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Relative to public comments at this evening's meeting, if you would please complete a speaker's card if you're interested in speaking. Does not preclude you from speaking. If you don't fill out a card, it just gives me an opportunity to call on you when the appropriate agenda item comes up. I'd like to limit your comments to three minutes and would ask that you come up to the podium, identify yourself by stating your name and address for the record. Thank you. Are there any disclosures of ex parte communications? Mr. Gelsner.
At this past Monday's city council meeting, I had brief conversations with Montage Holdings Partners.
Any other?
I had state communications with Montage Holdings this past week.
And I too had conversation today with representative from Montage Holdings. Are there any other?
I had ex parte communication with Montage Holding, but I don't remember when it was. But it was before this meeting.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other? Okay. Next is our consent agenda. There are two cases. Case 06-300-0002, Cobblestone Auto Spa and Market Special Use Permit. Recommendation for that to be continued to our January 17 meeting. And case 06-200-00020, Palm Valley Crossing Planned Area Development, PAD Amendment, to be continued to our January 17 Planning Commission meeting. Is there anyone that would like to, either in the audience or a member of the commission, like to pull either of those items from the consent agenda for discussion? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, motion to continue case 06-300-0002, Cobblestone Auto Spa Market Use Permit, and case 06-200-0020, Palm Valley Crossing Planned Area Development Amendment to the January 17, 2007 meeting.
I have a motion to recommend approval of the consent agenda. Do I have a second? I have a second from Mr. Gelsner. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Under old business, case 06-700-0008, Sonoran Valley General Plan Amendment. This is a public hearing to consider a request for a major amendment to the general plan of the City of Goodyear to facilitate the zoning and development of portions of an area encompassing approximately 95 square miles south of the city's existing southern planning area, extending the city's municipal planning boundary south of Patterson Road to approximately four miles south of State Route 238, and generally following the Sonoran Desert National Monument boundary on the west and the Maricopa Penile County boundary on the east. The applicant is the City of Goodyear. And the staff presentation.
Thank you, Chairman Horstman, members of the commission, members of the public. Place the context map up here briefly so that, again, you can catch your bearings on the amendment application and the boundaries of that in relation to Goodyear's current municipal limits. I have just two items that I wanted to address quickly, and then I will conclude my remarks. I've moved on to the land use plan. We received some comments from a property owner, and I wanted to talk to you about this specific area. I apologize that this isn't larger. This is included in your booklet in page 48. There is a property at the Honeycutt Road alignment. I'm going to use this laser pointer up here for the public. Sorry, I'm wiggling too much. This area here, you can see that this arterial does not follow the section line. It kind of curves up at this point. The property owner in this area has some concerns because it runs through his property and creates some difficulty. The property owner recommended that that roadway alignment be revised down to the section line, and staff agrees with that request and supports that request. So this recommendation, we would ask that you, we would revise that road accordingly to follow the section line. The second comment that I wanted to note, the area is north, is this area, I wanted to talk briefly about this area here. You can see that this is the state land parcel where the state lands, approximately 5,000 acres. Specifically, I wanted to talk about some of the roadway alignments at the north of the property. You can see that there's three arrows, and the arterials essentially end a little bit north of the property. We've received some comments from members of the development community regarding the configuration of those roadways and how they will blend in with the future developments to the north. And it's important to note at this time that although these roadways with arrows are shown in those locations, it's important to note that this is a general plan level document. This is a general plan land use map that we're dealing with. The general plan, it uses a tool to evaluate future zoning requests, and in the future, when specific development plans are proposed and prepared for this area, it may be appropriate for arterial roadways to be slightly moved or be in different areas. But at this point, for the purposes of this general plan amendment, again, this is the general plan level. If there are specific development plans that may show the city that it's appropriate for these arterial roadways to be tweaked a little bit, those can be approved and it can be reconfigured when those specific development plans are created and when they are submitted to the city. The intent of the plan is to show a roadway network based on the level of planning that we currently have. And as the commission is aware, the comprehensive transportation circulation plan that the city has initiated to cover all of the general plan amendments is still being worked on, and it has not been completed yet. So there may be some minor changes, but again, just wanted to note that this is at the general plan level. Based on the city's general plan amendment criteria and existing general plan policies, staff finds that the Sonoran Valley General Plan Amendment is appropriate and recommends approval of this major general plan amendment. And this concludes the presentation by staff. Staff is available to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions of staff? Did anyone from Montage want to update us on anything since our last meeting or just be available to answer any questions? Thank you. Is there anyone in the room that would like to speak on this application? I have Gerald Copeland that has submitted an interest card.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Gerald Copeland. My address is 1310 East Puget Avenue, Phoenix, Arizona, 85020. I'm here representing Reverend Junius Blake, who is the owner of the 40-acre parcel on the northeast corner of 99th Avenue and Steen Road. On October 18, at the public hearing that did not actually take place, we submitted a letter requesting that some commercial zoning be considered for his 40-acre parcel since it's at the obvious corner of two section-lined streets. In the meantime, the general plan as proposed has been changed to include an additional 40 acres of commercial zoning in the very same section, except on the opposite corner at the southeast corner of Section 4, also on Steen Road. We merely are here to ask the staff and the commission to take another look at commercial zoning for that northeast corner of Steen Road and 99th Avenue and consider not the whole 40 acres of commercial, but some commercial zoning on that corner.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this case?
Can I ask a question of staff?
Sure.
The parcel that this gentleman referred to, I remember when we moved the, when we moved the commercial nodes and we changed the curvilinear streets to put them on the section lines. Is there any reason that we could not take that 40 acres that's across on the other side and just split that into two 20-acre parcels, one on either side of these section-lined streets?
Chairman Horstman, Commissioner Gelsner, I've placed the map up here to try to help you catch your bearings. I'm going to defer to our consultant who has been working with this property owner on these discussions, Mr. Kevin Kubler with RBF.
Kevin, is it the pink parcel or is it the square that's up?
Chairman Horstman, Commissioner Gelsner, it would be the square that's outlined in black, Commissioner Gelsner, with respect to the parcel that the jury was referencing in his comments. So what's at issue here, and was what Mr. Copeland spoke to Commissioner Gelsner, is with respect to the current configuration of the relatively secondary or peripheral type of contributing wash to the waterman wash watershed. And initial line work on the property had suggested that perhaps the, while easily identified on an aerial, at a general plan level of discussion or research, if you will, further investigation and having, exchanging dialogue with the jury convinces that based on the vegetative state that water indeed is being routed to the section line, to the west side of the property, and therefore, we are going to suggest as it's being tweaked in the next little bit as it's moving forward to council in particular, that a slight reconfiguration of the wash alignment as existing shown on the general plan.
So the white line is what we think is the waterman wash, but that in essence isn't really going to be there. It's going to move over the section line? Or is that what you're, is that what I'm?
Chairman Horstman, Commissioner Gelsner, the white line would represent exactly what is shown on the existing Figure Four in the booklet that Brett was referencing to you in the Sonoran Valley Land Use Plan. The, for purposes of right now, this is a hand-sketched line as to where the realignment of the wash is being proposed. And again, this is a real secondary minimal wash. This is not waterman itself, Commissioner Gelsner. It's a contributing wash that's oh, good, five miles away from the actual waterman wash.
Okay. Let me ask another question, and you can answer this with both your former city hat on and as a consultant of the city. Would this be a minor amendment change to this, assuming we approve the general plan the way it stands as right now, without taking any change to this property? And three or four years later, as development happens and things want to happen, there is still a desire. Would this be a minor amendment or would this be a major amendment?
Chairman Horstman, Commissioner Gelsner, I think it would be neither, quite frankly. I don't think it would be, at the end of the day, applicable to a general plan level of dialogue. If and when this gentleman comes to develop, it would be something that would be handled through the progression of the zoning process with more engineering accuracy identified. Again, this is a broad-brush level of analysis, as I'm sure you can appreciate. As more refined information comes forward, and we rely on Mr. Copeland to bring that with respect to this property, and appreciate him pointing that out, that as the property develops, I think, Commissioner Gelsner, one could expect that they would have the ability to kind of reconfigure the alignment of that wash through the due course of development and really it's not.
Okay. Let me rephrase the question, Kevin.
Okay.
To change it from, right now, it looks like it's rural residential or two to four, you know, it's some kind of residential in there, to change it to some type of commercial, if the whole 40 acres were to change, would that be a major amendment or a minor amendment? Or if it was subdivided, if it was divided so that 10 acres was commercial and had a small commercial corner on it? That's the question that I want to answer.
I apologize. I thought you were referring to the wash reconfiguration.
No, no.
I should probably defer to staff. But my understanding of the general plan, it would be anything 20 acres or less would be considered a nonamendment. It could be handled through the zoning, and anything above that would be?
A minor.
Minor, yes.
That's correct.
Is that correct? Okay. Now let's get the attorney back who made the comment and see.
Mr. Copeland?
Now that you've heard the answer of staff that, you know, if 20 acres came over, it's an administrative process, or less than 20 acres, do you still have concerns about how we handle this, or do you want it ended now? Because I don't think it's going to get handled now.
I understand that, and I understand the timing we are in the process. However, my client has instructed me to appeal to you to make that change, to not grant or illustrate 40 acres of commercial, but just some commercial on that corner and recognize that it is a commercial corner of some small acreage. And as you know, the literature in planning is full of putting destinations closer to origin, so there's not so much driving, not so much fuel waste, and not so much pollution and all that sort of thing. And my client believes that the distribution of commercial zoning is far superior to putting 40 acres in one regional area and causing all the traffic to go to one spot. So that's the underlying theory of his thinking, and he's really looking for the general plan to acknowledge that that intersection is a potential commercial area, regardless of the size.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding that issue? Mr. Bull?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission, Ed Bull, 702 East Osborne, representing Newland. I'm speaking on behalf of Newland as a neighbor that, as you know, is located just to the immediate north of the northernmost boundary of the Sonoran Valley GPA. There are several things I want to emphasize from the outset. I want to emphasize that we are not opposed to this GPA. I want to emphasize that we are not asking for a continuance, that we are not asking for the commission to delay or in any way slow down the process on this GPA. I also want to emphasize that our, the focus of our concern tonight has to do solely with Bullard Road, and I'll get into some more details on that in just a minute. Staff touched on it a couple of minutes ago. The focus is solely on that, and I also want to emphasize that our concern and suggested solution is something that I do not believe comes as any surprise to the staff of RBF or to the Montage folks, in that as soon as we became aware that this was an issue as a result of some discussions leading up to RBF's letter that was issued, I think, the 21st, immediately, Newland began working with staff, RBF, and others. There's been meetings, there's been discussions, and was addressed in the letter that was presented in conjunction with your last Planning Commission hearing and so on. As I emphasized, we are not opposed to this GPA. And as staff touched on, I believe staff is acknowledging, and they may or may not want to reconfirm further, that staff is recognizing that the circulation component of the northern edge of the Sonoran Valley GPA and the southern edge of the Straya Mountain Ranch's circulation GPA, that that's not yet finalized. And I believe, unless I misunderstand, that staff is very open, as is, I think, Montage and others, to continuing to study that particular issue with us, and I want to go into some detail as to why Newland believes additional study and focus on that issue is very, very important, but not the type of thing that should slow down or stop the commission's action on this particular GPA that's in front of you tonight. By way of background, and I'd like to touch on that for just a minute or so if I could before getting into our particular issue and concern here, by way of background, as you know, the city's current 2003 general plan, in fact, the 1998 general plan, did not call for the 303 to go through the Straya Mountain Ranch. In fact, it was about a year ago when there was some headbutting between some property owners to the west of Straya Mountain Ranch that we were asked by the city and some others to see if we could weigh in and help find a solution. It was kind of a dilemma that had arisen with the 303 being a cul-de-sac leading into the Sonoran National Monument, and some other issues and concerns that runs out of that. So Newland with Sun MP hired consultants to work on circulation plans and so on that showed a 303 alignment coming through Straya Mountain Ranch, and we filed that. I think we were the first to file circulation GPAs down in this area, and a number of others followed after us. But be that as it may, we came out and said, here's where the 303 could go, and so on and so forth, believing that the 303 was a very important regional transportation component for this part of the city and this part of the valley, even before we knew that there was going to be a Sonoran Valley GPA. Certainly, the importance of the 303 has been nothing but amplified, I believe, with the emergence of the Sonoran Valley GPA and related amendments in the area. Having said that, once we'd shown a proposed alignment of the 303, and that particular alignment is something that is shown here, the alignment coming down in this area and then coming on down somewhere to the south and east, we weren't pretending to know where it should go. We offered some suggestions. Others have picked up the ball and run with it since, and we're fine with what they're proposing. But with respect to the 303 alignment, we've been asked to move it a half a mile to the west, and as we indicated at a hearing or two ago, that's fine with us. And there's been a number of other suggestions that staff or RBF or other neighbors have asked Newland and Sun MP and their consultants to consider. Would you move this a little bit this way and that a little bit that way? And I think those discussions and dialogues and solutions have been very ongoing and very cooperative. In looking at this GPA that we filed, you'll see that Cotton Lane comes down here to this Queen Creek Road alignment, Estrella Parkway comes on down, and so on. We intentionally did not have Cotton Lane come on down and tie into what staff is now calling for as a direct Bullard alignment coming up to the north and tying back into Cotton Lane. And there's a number of reasons that we did not call for that direct shot connection to occur immediately adjacent to the proposed 303 corridor. The reasons that we used, we think, were very important then. We believe that they're at least as equally important, maybe more so today, in light of the emergence of the proposed Sonoran Valley development area. As we talk about the 303, and as we talk about its regional importance, we believe it's something that needs to be prioritized in the context of the city and various other political and political entities and private entities that are involved in this area. If we're going to have a 303, we believe that, and by all indication, it's very important to the city, I believe it's very important to the Sonoran Valley people from our meetings with them yesterday, have got to have an emphasis on the 303, and we have, in our opinion, got to do the kinds of things that needs to be done to make it happen, and we have to be very cautious that we do not unintentionally de-emphasize the 303 or make it really easy for either to politically or fiscally simply not get around to doing the 303 because we happen to build a parallel arterial that happens to sit there as an unintentional magnet for high-speed, high-volume cut-through traffic. So having said that, the concerns that we have with a Bullard alignment running straight north fall into two or three or four categories, and instead of running straight north, I'll just throw this up here as an illustrative example, it is not something that staff or RBF or anybody else has signed off on, but just as we put on the table a proposed 303 alignment six months or so ago, we wanted to put on the table as an illustrative example, bringing Bullard up and then turning it to the west. Obviously, it needs more study and consideration and detail, but not having Bullard run straight north, parallel to the 303, and create that unintended, we're fearful, substitute for the 303 and magnet for cut-through traffic. Having said that, and with that background in mind, as we're talking about our concerns with Bullard running straight north, as I indicated, right at the very top of our list, and what we perceive at least would be right at the top of the city's list from a public policy perspective, is continuing to place an emphasis on the 303 and not unintentionally diluting that emphasis by having this parallel arterial a half a mile away to the west when we have another parallel arterial that's proposed just to the east of the 303 as well. As a matter of policy, we really strongly encourage your commission and ultimately the council to focus on the 303 and ask all political jurisdictions and private property owners to join with all of us, and I think it's important for the Sonoran Valley area as well, and the head nods, I think, we emphasize the importance of that, that we collectively do what we can to make sure that the 303 happens. Secondly, if Bullard is a straight shot to the north, as I indicated, we are very concerned that Bullard is going to become an unintended magnet for high-speed traffic that is just going to run right straight through Estrella Mountain Ranch and properties located further to the north, in a manner that certainly was not intended, in a manner that certainly is not consistent with the visioning that Newland has been doing with staff and your commission and council and others, as we've been trying to work through how to best address the future planning of the Straya Mountain Ranch. As you know, what we submitted this time around was simply the circulation general plan map, and again, there's been a number of modifications to this that we've already agreed to, including moving the 303 over a half a mile and so on and so forth. We submitted this first because from our perspective, it was very important to get in place the backbone circulation system on a map so that as we continue to work on land planning, we know whether or not we're dealing with a freeway, a collector's street, or an arterial, or what we're dealing with. This issue is one that's very, very important to us, and as I indicated, is one that Newland and their planners, both their planning planners and their transportation planners, intentionally did not call for a straight shot arterial coming on down here tying into Bullard that would hook back up to Cotton Lane. Thirdly, when you look at the scenario, if Bullard were Thirdly, when you look at the scenario, if Bullard were to go straight north and then ultimately tie into Cotton Lane, that is yet another, from our perspective, expensive and seemingly unnecessary expenditures or funds for another crossing of Bullard, another crossing of the wash in that location. The freeway should be going through there, some other arterials should be going in there. We again believe Bullard should come off to the west and help serve some of the regional traffic needs of some of those western properties in the area. Now, as I indicated, it's my understanding from conversation with, with staff and comments from staff's presentation earlier this evening, that staff is, is recognizing, I believe, that the transportation or circulation element, particularly with respect to Bullard, in the northern portion of Sonoran Valley GPA is not locked in. It is something that is still open to study, I believe, from staff's perspective. It's something that can continue to be dealt with, and it's something that Harvey's nods of the head, I believe, is something that, that will be studied. Part of what we want to emphasize is, at the same time, I want to reemphasize that we're not opposed to this general plan amendment. We're not opposed to Montage's request that 303 come on down and connect into Montage's property, or they're proposing it connect. We're not opposed to Rainbow Valley Road coming on down into the Sonoran Valley area where Montage is proposing it's coming into. And we understand, correct me if I'm wrong, that Montage understands and is not opposed to what we're requesting here with respect to Bullard Road. Tonight may or may not be the time to decide that issue, but I think importantly, we certainly wanted to get our concern on the record here tonight, and that we discussed it in meetings with staff and the consultants and our neighbors. We'd addressed it in the letter that we just alluded to when we were here at your prior hearing, but this evening, we, we felt we needed to address it in front of your commission. It's something that, that we very much would ask, that presuming your commission is prepared to act tonight on the Sonoran Valley general plan amendment, that your action make it clear that, that if you're approving that general plan amendment, that that approval is not locking in the circulation element with respect to Bullard Road. It's not officially locking it in, it's not implicitly locking it in, there's not an assumption that it's locked in. Instead, it's something that, that is going to be studied, and we would further encourage that your commission encourage staff and RBF and the Montage folks and us and anybody else that's interested to quickly, I hope for the council acts on this Sonoran Valley general plan amendment, to come together with a mutually acceptable solution that we hope continues to reinforce the regional importance of the 303, does not unintentionally dilute that regional importance, and does not unintentionally create an invitation to high-speed cut-through traffic. If you have questions, we'll try to answer them. Any questions for Mr. Bullard? Thank you very much. Dustin Jones.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Dustin Jones with Snell and Wilmer on behalf of Waste Management of Arizona. With me tonight is Vince Murphy. Wanted to thank you all for the opportunity which we have to present again before you this evening. We have attended all of the public hearings, the one in Mobile, the one of Straya Mountain Ranch, and two that have been convened here in this building. We wanted to give you an update on where we have come, where we've arrived over the past few months in our discussions with staff and our discussions with Montage, who's developing the master plan community down there. Didn't want to go into too much detail, but understanding that Commissioner Bay was not in, in the hearing a month ago, wanted to go through our operations for his benefit, and I'm just chiding him just a little bit, but wanted to go through our presentation, talk about our, our operations and who we are and what we're doing down there, so that everyone is fully aware as a commission, once the general plan is adopted, what Waste Management is doing now and what they will continue to do down there, their landfill that has been permitted for, for quite a while into the future as homes will be built down in this area. As we stated in our, in our presentation a month ago, that this is a fully permitted and fully regulated site by both federal state law. The property has a special use permit that was granted by Maricopa County. It's not in the city of Goodyear, it's in the, in Maricopa County, and has that permit there and, and is intending to continue operating in the county based on that special use permit. The site was operational in 1991 and is one of the largest landfill sites in the state of Arizona. It is the largest landfill in Arizona, and is permitted up to 250 feet high. And in our discussions with some of the commissioners, some of the community members, some of the council members, it was something they didn't realize, that this is a 250-foot-high landfill. That's what the permit provides for. Nineteen percent of the waste in Arizona arrives at this landfill via primarily via truck, but also there is a rail line that runs along the highway there, through Mobile, that also waste is allowed to come through on, to the site from that rail line. The expected life of the landfill is about 50 to 75 years. No one really knows exactly how long that's going to take, how, is, as a matter of how much growth and how much development occurs in, in the valley and how much waste is disposed of by people. Just to give you a little rundown on our operations, as I did before, about 300 to 500 trucks come to this landfill every single day. Our alignment, as I illustrated last time, is the trucks come down primarily through, or actually, all trucks come through Maricopa, or come down the highway, arrive at 91st Avenue, and come into that southeast corner of the site. That's where the entry is, that's where all the, the deliveries are taken on that side, at the site right now. The land use map that you're, you have before you doesn't necessarily acknowledge that this is the route, but acknowledges a, a preferred route or a different route that could be approved in the future. As I talked about, the land, the trucks come in, they arrive, they, they're filled up at the transfer stations around the valley. There's one here in the city of Goodyear. The waste that's collected at the city of Goodyear, or the Perryville landfill, actually does not arrive at this site, actually goes up to a landfill up near Surprise. But most of the waste that arrives at, at the Butterfield site comes from the East Valley, comes from Tucson, comes from other parts of the state. Those trucks arrive, delivered, and the, the refuse is, is compacted and, and treated on the site. As we talked about last, at our last public hearing, with respect to the decision this commission needs to make, and, and the land use plan, is you need some considerations. And the considerations are odor, this is a landfill, dust, litter, and noise. And we, we bring up the issue of noise because there are large trucks that drive around this site, and with a, with a landfill that's permitted to 250 feet high, those trucks driving around the landfill probably could be heard from a, a distance from the site. You can imagine the beep, beep, beep every time one of the trucks is, is in reverse and, and doing its duty, doing its job out on the landfill. So, just a consideration. And part of those considerations we made at the last meeting were to provide for sufficient buffer around the site. And we asked for during that, our last hearing, where we made our recommendations, that no residence be built within one-half mile of the site. We didn't feel it would be appropriate land use to have homes adjacent to the landfill. We asked for that half-mile spread from it. And we also asked that once the zoning application comes in from Montage, that notice be required to be given to all the residents within this, this PAD that would be approved, letting everyone know that it's there. It would be our argument, we would submit, that people would probably see us well before they receive the notification, because it is a land, large landfill. But that's one of the requests we made, as wanting to be good neighbors. We're there, the residents will be moving in and encroaching on, on essentially our lifestyle as a landfill down there, and we want to make sure that proper notifications are given. A lot of the work that we have undertaken over the past few weeks and months have been working with staff on this land use plan. And we would, would submit that the land use plan that you have before you is a collaborative effort by both Montage, as well as Waste Management, to provide the proper buffering and address the concerns that we have raised in, in a number of the meetings. And as you can see on this land use map, there are no homes adjacent to the landfill. The light purple that you see, and the landfill I see is the dark, dark purple, that's a general industrial. The light purple to the east of the site, section 17, would be a light industrial land use designation that would not have residential. To the south, you can see the light purple there as well, as well as some commercial that's down there, no residential adjacent to the landfill. And then to the west of the landfill as well, additional buffering, additional general industrial land use designation. Some of our other concerns that we didn't necessarily voice in our, in the public meetings, but in our discussions and working with Montage, was the alignment of the 303. Under the original plan that was presented to us over, during the late summer, the alignment of the 303 really kind of nipped the southwest corner of the landfill site. In our discussions with the staff, city staff, as well as the developer, talked about moving that away, moving it away from our southwest corner, and as you can see in this land use map, that also was represented. One of the other things that we discussed with staff was the potential, again noting that some of the waste that arrives at the landfill arrives by rail, is the allowance for an additional rail spur to be allowed, permitted on the land use map or indicated on the land use map. So, you can see there's a, there's a fine line that's noted as a rail spur that, that comes up from Highway 238 and comes up along that western border of the landfill. And we believe, again, that probably of proper use, if we're going to continue those types of uses, and there are going to be people in the area to be able to have the opportunity to have a rail spur adjacent to the site. There isn't one necessarily planned right now, but we wanted the general plan, land use map to reflect that. What we've done, most recently, had one of our planners in our office go out to the site yesterday and take some pictures at that half-mile mark around the, around the landfill, so you can get an indication of what people will be seeing from the half-mile nodes around the site. So, at this point here on the land use map, had our planner again take just a digital photo. This is looking north, and you can see the landfill in the back. That's, that right there, what you see is a 250-foot-high. This is looking north from that node that I showed you, and that's the visibility. On the western side of the landfill, again, about a half-mile from the site, looking west, or looking east, eastern direction, there's the, the mound there. On the north side, again, going out about a half a mile from the landfill, looking south, you can see the landfill. And then again, on the eastern side, looking west, a photo showing the visibility of the landfill. We want to thank staff for the considerations, for our recommendations, for the buffering, not providing the, not allowing for the residential to be within that half-mile. We feel that these photos illustrate what the, any resident that would be at that half-mile would see. We were, again, very appreciative of Montage and the time that they have spent working with us over the past few months to provide for compatible land uses, Waste Management respecting their desire to develop in this area and develop master plan community, and again appreciate Montage's respect for Waste Management's operations that have been down there and the significant financial investment that this is for Waste Management nationally and within, within the corporation. So, we appreciate, again, staff's time, Montage's time, and appreciate the commission hearing our considerations. Thank you.
Questions? Ms. Astor.
Mr. Jones, now, you stated that the buffering you were pleased with from the, you know, residential area, the half-mile buffering, and you mentioned the, the light rail spur, as you called it. One thing that I, not sure that I heard was the actual traveling of the 300, 500 trucks daily that you stated was off of the 238 and 91st Avenue?
Yeah, I, I agree. Is this, is this?
You know, you had, where you had your little truck, your little...
Yeah, I'll show you that on this map where that truck area is. This line here on the map is 91st Avenue. So, the trucks arrive on 238, turn north here, and go to this corner, and then come into the site, enter at this section.
Okay, so they will be turning right there at the corner, not, not truly hitting a major residential section before it?
This, this reflects the existing operations, that the trucks do, yes, come up 91st Avenue and go to the west and enter at the site right here.
Mr. Gilzer.
Is that a public highway or is that a private road?
It's, I believe it's, it's a county road.
So, then, as long as you have access for your trucks to get to the front door of Waste Management, you really don't care what street they go up? Is that correct?
Well, we continue our operations on, on the road, that's public road that accesses our site.
So, if another arterial that was more convenient or came through this general plan was built, you might, you know, the, the access point would, might change and the road would change?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gilzer, if there was another public road provided that would give us the comparable access to our entry, I don't think there would be any objections to that. Vince, you mean?
Let me ask, can, is, is Montage planning this whole thing? Mr. Cooper, you want to, Mr. Porter or Garth, do you want to come, who wants to talk about this?
I'm, I'm happy to do that. Garth Uyghur, Montage Holdings, 6720 North Scottsdale Road, Scottsdale, Arizona.
I'm, I'm looking at this road and saying, well, okay, you know, there's a road and it's going right through what looks like commercial and apartment buildings and everything else. Is that the, I mean, is there an ultimate plan to, to, you know, redesignate a truck route through the holdings and then we're not seeing it? Is it going to come up to 303 or, you know, give me, give me the answer.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I will give you an answer that I believe to be true, but it would be very important, I think, for Waste Management to represent what their true desires are. We have been aware of the facility from the very beginning. Obviously, we're planning around that and have spent a big amount of our time and effort to do that and think it's a great facility. We're also eliminating another competing facility in this process, which we think to be very important. Our understanding is that Waste Management has studied entering on that purple segment that falls off to the, to the west here, which we currently own. They have approached us with the idea of trading some of the property which they own in this general vicinity, and in doing so, I think, and this is my presumption, that they may be considering entering from that side, but I'm, I'm, I don't want to speak to them.
That's fine, that's fine. That's something that, that's four or five years down, you know, after the 690s sold out, right, that we'll worry about that?
It would definitely be after the 690, but we hope not nearly that long.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gilzer, we confirm what Montage has stated on the record. We have entered in discussions with them about changing the location, understanding where they're planning their village center, their commercial areas on the land use map. We've thought from the very beginning that if, if this is truly going to be the commercial entrance to the community, that our trucks arriving on this route probably isn't the best planning for them. It is our existing operations, it would continue that operations if another opportunity didn't present, present itself. But we have approached them about potentially trading some land to give us access on our western side of our, of our site, so as to not have the two, the 300 to 500 and potentially more trucks driving through the middle of the master plan community. But those discussions, again, are preliminary and haven't been finalized in between the two prior, two parties. And so, as we move along, this general plan map, and this is why we're, we're pleased with what the result, this would reflect that intent if it was to, if it was to be memorialized.
This commissioner would strongly recommend you continue to move in that direction.
Any questions from, any questions from Mr.?
Sure, thank you very much. Dustin, early showed us a, excuse me, a dot point facilitating a view from the east. Not that you have to go back to the presentation, but was that viewpoint actually on the half-section line? I was a little thrown off by the, what you called a half-mile, and so I kind of wanted to see how that fit within the, the buffer that you mentioned earlier.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Bay, the photo that you're talking about on the, the east side?
I believe that's the one, that was by the 16?
Yes, the planner in my office who went out there yesterday to take the pictures drove up 91st Avenue here and took the photo about right here. So, it was actually just a little more than a half-mile, actually, on this side, because the, where the purple ends would be the midsection line. That's exactly the half-mile, so the photo was taken just about right here.
Okay, so, so it was actually outside of the buffer?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just like, but it's where the residential, you can see that's on the land use map, is shown here. So, anyone, any residential in that area, that's the visibility of the landfill, would be the visibility of the landfill.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from Mr. Jones? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to, to speak on this case? Are there any other comments from Montage? Are there any questions of Montage?
Chairman, I do have a question with staff after the discussion. There was, there was considerable discussion about the alignment, and I've heard, heard two major, two major legs. One was, of course, the 303, and the other was preservation of SR 238. I guess my concern about this is that this is... I guess my concern about this is that this is really a public-private partnership sort of thing. And a week ago, I was at a transportation summit with the ADOT director speaking about this phenomenon. And, and how does that alignment get preserved for, for use in the future? And currently their process is to, the feds require them to set alternatives and then from there select the best alternative. Obviously, it creates, it's problematic because it means that there's four or five alternatives where, whereas in the meantime, the private sector and you are setting aside what you believe the alignment is going to be. So I'm trying to frame this question in a way so that it sort of makes some sort of sense. I guess my concern is that right now we're talking about align, making these alignments so that they are compatible with all of the surrounding communities. And I guess I, I wonder, are we moving forward with working with ADOT to assure that the work that you do now for those alignments are going to be preserved at the time that they actually build the freeway? So I'm asking this of staff because you're the public representative and probably have best access to ADOT.
Chairman Horsman, Commissioner Bay, I can't answer that, but there's, there's a lot more smarter people here than I am. Chairman Horsman, Commissioner Bay, that's an excellent question. I suppose there's a lot of people in this room that can attempt to get their arms around that particular question, but I'll take a stab at it. And I think if you recall at the meeting that we had, the public hearing at Stray Mountain Ranch, I think the city manager, Steve Cleveland, touched on it pretty well, quite frankly, with respect to trying to avoid some of the cul-de-sac syndrome that Owatuki has been faced with and some of the challenges and exponentially high dollar value that ADOT is in the position of having to spend to acquire rights of way to relieve the Owatuki area and bring that 202 San Tan Freeway out of loop around the mountain and hook up back up to 51st, 55th Avenue alignment. And so I think with and through those types of anecdotes in the East Valley and others that you have the opportunity here to, you know, control your destiny of sorts with respect to working with, having the luxury of working with large master plan owners, Newland, Montage, and others that will come in between to sit down and identify that alignment early on. And I think one of the things that's being called for right now is a thousand-foot corridor. And as it, as properties go from general plan level down to zoning level, certainly narrowing that corridor as more refined studies move forward, but working with the large master plan developers to establish that alignment sooner than later where it becomes much less taxpayers' dollars, city, state, federal, and otherwise to acquire those rights of ways down there.
No, I, I agree with the philosophy. I guess my point is, is ADOT involved with that? And, and are you, is staff, and I guess I have to say staff in the private, in the private sector, working with ADOT to change their procedures that requires that they do this so that the alignments that you assign are going to be preserved?
If you respond.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Bay, maybe one response to that. You're correct, as, you know, currently ADOT, this is too early for ADOT to be involved. And they, ADOT will say that. But as Mr. Cooper indicated, I mean, as you identify the alignment, at first, you need to do that now, the earliest possible, so you can start making those preparations for preservation and working with the master plan communities to provide that. But you're correct, as you heard, when ADOT does get into the, to the process approximately 10 years before they start construction, as they're doing with the 303 now from I-10 to the river, they're starting that process, they will, and they are mandated to look at alternatives, alignments. But what you'll, you'll see is that if you have done the preparation work through the city to define the alignment now, preserve it. There is going to be one alternative that's going to stand out more than anything else. And that's where you plan for it, and that will be the alignment. And you have to count on that, I believe.
Okay.
I have a question of Mr. Gelsner.
Mr. Coombs. When we, when, when the RBF transportation study concludes, will that not be a general plan amendment that will go forth so that we can, you know, give the power of, in other words, we're approving this general plan, we're going to have a bunch, a whole six more of them in January? And, and if the study isn't completed at that point in time, then somehow we're going to have to have the study trump everything that we've done because the study is going to have the preferred alignments. So, so my question is, is the study going to become a general plan amendment that we're going to deal with next year? Since transportation circulation is part of it, is one of the components of a general plan?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gelsner, you know, we certainly have to, we'll hope that the RBF study, you know, is completed and we, relative to the other six general plan amendments that we'll be bringing back to you in January. And that will establish the circulation framework within those general plan amendments that are before you. I think the broader question maybe you're asking is, is that for the entire South Goodyear area, will that study in itself change the general plan circulation within the general plan for other properties? And I think that's a good question, one that I've identified. I think next year we're going to probably come back to you for more formal entire South Goodyear area to adopt a full change to the circulation element of the general plan to reflect the 303 alignment as well as all the other alignments that we're looking at for the arterial streets in conjunction with these individual GPAs that we're looking at now. So I guess...
Okay, I, I, I'm just saying, I want to be, I think we need, we owe it to all the, these, all the developers who are bringing forth all these general plan amendments, that once we establish a, a transportation and circulation plan, that we make that not just an ordinance or not just a recommended, you know, recommended procedure, but we make that actually part of the general plan as an amendment so that it has the, the, you know, the standing of a, of a general plan and it would trump anything else that we've done previously.
Mr. Chairman, I totally agree that was, that would be our intent to do that, yes. So it does, is very definitive, and this is the circulation framework for this entire area.
Good, then we can tell everybody that they, they're on notice that that's what's going to happen.
I'd like to piggyback on Commissioner Gelsner just a little bit because obviously there's some disparity between studies that were done up in the north and alignment for the studies that's occurring in the southern part. So as a part of that, I think that we can't just rely on the study done by RBF. We'll have to initiate a study that will include all components of it so that when developers set aside that line, their, that alignment, they're doing it in accordance so that their properties that they are designing for will remain sound, that it, so that they don't have to worry about changing it again. So I'm, I'm very concerned that we don't just use one study. I would like to see a consortium effort so that we have everyone at the table and all of those alignments are, and makes everyone comfortable.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Bay, if I may add to that, what else were missing not thrown into as part of the equation is we're going to have the luxury of working with MAG and ADOT over the next 12 months for an additional study that they're undertaking for a large regional area, the Hidden Valley Transportation Study.
Okay.
That's going to include a broader perspective and reach at it. The city of Goodyear has been at the table as well as the neighboring communities with ADOT and MAG and has contributed financially to that study. That's going to commence in January and take about approximately 12 months to complete.
So are you saying that the framework study that's done by ADOT is, is going to trump whatever we do here? Is that, is that what I'm hearing? Because, because Commissioner Gelsner wants this transportation plan to be sort of the cutting stone, yet there's another framework study going on outside of that?
I, I think it's going to be somewhat of the contrary, Commissioner Bay, quite frankly, is that they're going to have the luxury of kicking off that study with a, a lot of homework done on this end of the journey, if you will, as, as part of their larger study area. There's going to, there's been a lot of blood, sweat, and tears that's going to go into that process and already has gone into that process here collectively looking at this area. I think that study will have the benefit of piggybacking on the volume of work that's been collected here and incorporated into, into their study.
Other questions of staff? Mr. Kugler? Okay. Are there any other individuals that would like to speak on this case?
Okay, one last question to you, Chairman Horsman.
We heard earlier about the preservation of SR 238 for the truck routes. Would that be part, in part, part of the amendment as, as we move forward with approving this?
No, I didn't see anything that was taking 238 out of service for trucks.
Okay. Just want, what was brought to our attention that we wanted, that they wanted it preserved. So I'm asking, do we need to say anything and...
I don't, I don't believe so because there's no proposals to take it out of service for trucks.
All right. Thank you.
Matter of fact, they're working on alternatives as we speak.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. If there are no other speakers, I will close the public hearing and ask for commission
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case 06-700-0008, the Sonoran Valley General Plan Amendment, with the concerns noted by Newland Communities and several other interested parties.
Second? I have a second for Mr. Brooker. Discussion on the motion.
I'd like to make a comment. In the November 15th meeting, I basically said that I was going to oppose this general plan application and listed about five reasons why I was going to do that. And tonight is my, another opportunity for this commissioner to eat some humble pie. And he will be voting reluctantly in favor of this because I believe that the positives definitely outweigh the negatives. But again, as I have seen over the course of the time and I've watched, and I know the history of several large developments in the city of Goodyear, time will only tell whether this was a good decision or not, but I will be voting in favor of it.
Other comments? I too had some concerns at our last public hearing. Mr. Cleveland addresses, addressed those to my satisfaction. However, I've got a little nagging, free-floating anxiety about what this means and potential costs down the road, direct, indirect, to, to the citizens of Goodyear. I think we've addressed them. I think we've done everything we can to address them. I'm going to be voting yes because the, as Mr. Gelsner said, the, I think the pluses, particularly the circulation and the opportunity to get, to eliminate the potential Owatuki cul-de-sac at Patterson Road and give access to the south is critical for the region. If it's not done by Goodyear, the likelihood that it gets done in a timely manner is probably off the boards. The county's going to be pressed for a lot of other priorities in other areas. I think we've done well in getting resources in the, in the recent past, but I think we need to be driving. And the public-private partnership, when we joined with Suncor for the development of Palm Valley, they were not a known entity for the city of Goodyear. They did have a reputation in other communities. We've made that a positive relationship. There's a great deal of trust between the city and Suncor. We have now an opportunity to create a new relationship with Newland Communities as well as Montage. And I'm taking things at, at face value and recommend that we move forward. The policymakers at the city council, the elected representatives for the city will have our recommendations and comments to consider as they move forward. I think it's, this is the kind of thing that even if I were opposed to it, I would vote in favor of moving it forward because that body is the one that ultimately should be responsible for making that ultimate decision as to whether or not this project becomes a, a Goodyear partnership with Montage. So I will be voting in favor of the motion. Any further comments or discussion?
So, Mr. B, sorry. Just, I would just like to say that I think on behalf of the commission that this is a very visionary move. I think that our future as a city is really going to be impacted by the decisions made here today and with city council. And I just want to say thank you to staff for putting the time and effort into this. I want to say thank you to all the private sector participants. I believe the names will go down in history for this motion and this action. So thank you very much to all of them.
Further comments or discussion?
I'll just keep it...
Hearing none, I'll call for the mo, for the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, the next item on our agenda is case 06-200-00029, Citrus Ridge Rezone. This is a public hearing to consider a request to rezone 80 acres generally located at the southeast corner of Citrus Road and Lower Buckeye Road from agricultural AU District to single-family residential R16 District and neighborhood commercial C1 District. The applicant is Angledwood Holdings LLC. Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the commission, sir, if it would please the commission, the first item on the new business section is the preliminary plat that runs with this. I'd be happy to make one presentation this evening if it would please...
That would be great.
Thank you very much. This is a request by Angledwood Holdings to rezone roughly 80.27 acres located at the northeast corner of Citrus Road and Lower Buckeye Road. Just looking at for a moment, just point out that this is La Jolla Vista, Perdara on the northwest corner, Cotton Commons to the east, and the El Cedro Ranch Project to the south there. They're requesting R16 single-family residential zoning as well as C1 neighborhood commercial located at the corner of the intersection. The general plan land use map designates this area as a low-density residential with a two to four dwelling units per acre, with the base being two. The applicant is a participating member of the MOU, which provides for a 2.85 base density. Citrus Ridge proposes to subdivide 70.67 acres into 189 single-family lots and a 9.6 acre gross commercial component. They propose two lot sizes, each being 60 and 70 foot wide respectively, with each being a minimum of 120 foot deep. The Citrus Ridge development proposes a 2.81 dwelling units per acre. Access will be provided to the development, two points along Lower Buckeye Road and another along Citrus Road. The development proposes 16.6 acres of open space of roughly 22%. They're proposing a neighborhood park, mini park, as well as pocket parks located within the development. Amenities will include tot lots, sh... Amenities will include tot lots, shaded remadas, playground equipment, and meandering trails. Assistant review meeting was held on May 4, 2006. There was no opposition to this development from adjacent property owners. Staff is recommending approval subject to the stipulations that you have contained in each of the staff reports before you. That concludes staff comments. I'll be available for any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Any questions of staff on this proposal? Ms. Osborne.
Just a couple of questions. The Future Commercial Site, what is the setback from that little cul-de-sac? I don't see a street name, but that's really right adjacent to the Future Commercial.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Osborne, are you?
Yes. Is there a, any kind of?
Just give me one second to pull the preliminary plat up here and I'll give you that dimension. I can tell you that we had discussions with the applicant and we voiced those concerns. They were kind enough to go back and extend the depth of those lots along the adjacent commercial to a depth that we felt was satisfactory. And ma'am, that would be 163 feet on both of those. 163 foot depth on those lots.
Also, correct me if I'm wrong. I did not see a stipulation that I would like, or that I would like to see regarding that Future Commercial, that there'd be signage stating to the coming home owners, that this will be commercial site. So that there would be, you know, they would see when they were looking out amongst that.
I would.
Is that in there? Is already in here or is it?
I'll double check it.
Okay.
The applicant has no issue with that and will be happy to add that.
Okay. I really think that somebody was listening to me because I like the layout of the open space. And also, this last stipulation that I don't always see, and it caught my eye, and that's stipulation 17. That there be?
On the rezone or on the preliminary plat?
Oh. I'm sorry. This is the rezone. O5-200. Yeah. 17, the developer shall ensure that all onsite and offsite water lines are part of a loop system that will be connected to at least two city of Goodyear water sources.
That's standard.
Is that standard? Okay.
Standard.
I guess I don't know this. That was all. Thank you.
Other questions of staff? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this case? Ms. Keek?
You're ahead. Don't. You're winning. Don't lose the game.
I'll go through these seven slides very quickly. Alrighty. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Karen Keek with Snell and Willard, One Arizona Center, Phoenix, 85004. Very happy to be here before you this evening on behalf of Angledwood Holdings. It's been an extensive process that we've engaged in with staff over the past year to look at this development plan for Citrus Ridge. And I think just based on some of the comments we've already heard, we're heading in the right direction. We've heard your concerns. We anticipated some of those concerns and have revised the development plan accordingly. To reiterate the context that Rick went over earlier, Citrus Ridge is located here at the intersection of Lower Buckeye and Citrus Road. And you see some of the anticipated and existing developments that surround the property, all of which are residential with the exception of a couple of corners at the intersection of Citrus and Lower Buckeye, which are planned for commercial. So at that intersection, that built out, we'll see about 50 acres of commercial. But the balance of the property around Citrus Ridge is single-family residential.
Karen?
The county subdivision, will that, when Levinson Property, I mean, I've seen Citrus Ridge, I've seen El Cidro Ranch. Is that going to create a county island for us?
I think, well, they wouldn't be permitted to let that happen through the annexation efforts. Citrus Ridge was recently annexed into the city. That's been approved by the city council. And we followed the statutory requirements.
I'm not worried about yours. I'm just saying, as a result of assuming the Levinson property is in, does the county subdivision now become a county island? That's what I'm asking.
Chairman, Commissioner Gelsner, it is a county island, but it's technically not a county island because it's part of our strip annexed area. So as long as we continue to fill in the gaps within our strip annexed area, we're reducing the amount of county island. We're not creating a county island.
So in essence, these are people who want to burn and not participate in the city.
Didn't say that.
I didn't say that.
Well, Councilwoman Linni, former Councilwoman Linni can say it. I can too. That's fine. I'm going, thank you.
Other questions or comments?
On that note? I'll just bring up the development plan for Citrus Ridge one more time and just show you the development plan that we've arrived at over a few improvements over the past several months. You'll see that about 105 units are planned at about 7,200 square feet, whereas the east half includes 84 units at 75 by 120, about 10,000 square feet. And in addition to the residential component of this development plan, nearly 10 acres are designated for neighborhood commercial development. I want to stress the fact that it's neighborhood commercial. We're seeking C1 zoning, which will be a small-scale neighborhood center, not competing with some of the centers that you see either existing or planned, for instance, at Australia Parkway and Van Buren. One of the components that we focused on a great deal over the course of the past year is the open space plan. I'm happy to hear that Commissioner Osborne noticed those efforts. Lots have been moved, streets have been moved, open space has been added. And what that has done as a result is created 16 acres of open space. And while 15% is required, we're providing almost 23%. Of that total acreage, about 10 and a half acres are outside of retention. Those are the areas that are quote-unquote "high and dry." They're used for active open space, for park amenities, things like that. And within that area, almost six acres are specifically for parks. You'll recall with the last update to the general plan, the addition of specific park requirements in the general plan. And we exceed those requirements for this 80-acre property by providing two mini parks and one neighborhood park. Rick touched on the analysis that we did through the creation of this development plan with respect to the commercial property. And while the market viability of commercial is not necessarily a land use decision, it is one that we wanted to look at with staff. And what we've done is with this analysis demonstrated that there are a lot of houses basically planned in this proximity around Citrus Ridge. And while we use census figures to project that population, I would venture to say that that's probably a conservative estimate. But with these figures, we're looking at approximately 46,000 people within a two-mile radius of Citrus Ridge, obviously creating quite a demand for commercial services at various levels. And you'll see right in the center there, the blue property, which is Citrus Ridge, which includes a small commercial component. And you'll see, of course, the other two properties at that intersection, also including commercial. And then some of the commercial properties that are planned on the areas within the one mile and the two mile and beyond. And finally, what we hope that you've been able to glean through your review of this development plan in our discussion this evening is that the Citrus Ridge development plan is compatible with the surrounding uses, as we've discussed. It is a development plan that is creative but yet efficient. And in doing so, we've created a variety of lot sizes. With that, you will get a variety of housing products within this 80 acres. We talked about the small-scale neighborhood commercial component. That will fill a niche that's particularly tailored towards that intersection for the residents of Citrus Ridge and the residents of those surrounding properties. And it will be designed in such a way to be compatible with the surrounding residential properties. Even though there will be some services provided at Citrus Ridge, Citrus Ridge is still located in close proximity to nearby restaurants, civic support services, and activities like the Australia Parkway corridor, the Future Cotton, Yuma intersection, et cetera. And finally, we are happy with the design guidelines and with the zoning ordinance standards that the council, the planning commission has adopted for the R16 district. We're not asking to deviate from those standards, hence the reason that we're seeking R16 and C1 zoning and not a PAD. And so with that, I'd be happy to conclude my remarks. Also with me this evening is Dustin Jones, as well as Ed Breckenberg and Paul Holland, if you have any questions with them. So thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Questions of Karen or the development team?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff has a question. Just want to clarify, one of the issues we have with similar developments in the community, I just want to clarify because I'm not sure it's clear on the record. There's a commercial corner and there's residential around it. And the situation sometimes we get is a residential developer, they'll have one residential, then we'll have a commercial developer that may lag behind. And we want to make sure that we understand that it's a unified development, that the developer will be responsible for all the road improvements, not only along the residential portion, but the commercial corners too. So it won't be piecemeal, but it's one unified development. So we are zoning both properties and both developments will be done, at least the infrastructure will be done simultaneously. It would be nice to have that on the record so we make sure there's no misunderstandings in the future.
Okay.
Can we ask the development team if they have problems doing curbs and gutters in front of commercial? Because if you're going to have the big trenching machine, you might as well do it all.
And we concur with those remarks for the record.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the commission on this proposal?
Mr. Chairman, one other remark. In response to Commissioner Osborne's question regards to disclosure about properties adjacent to commercial, you're correct. We failed, we did not include that as a stipulation. And we would recommend that you consider an additional stipulation that requires disclosure in the public report and the final plat that the, for the home buyer, that the property is located in proximity to commercial uses that may be subject to noise and activities from the commercial use.
Thank you. Is there anyone that would like to address the commission on this project? Okay, just to clarify, we've been asked to have a stipulation disclosing the commercial activity and attendant noise, et cetera. And we've been asked to make a point of clarifying that we're, we want this as a coordinated, single project for the purposes of infrastructure. And that is the expectation of the city. And made part of the record. Any? Ms. Osborne?
Just, when you say disclosure, are we speaking of disclosure as in just a paper that is shown to the homeowner or potential homeowner? Or as I stated, disclosure meaning a sign on the actual piece of property stating commercial?
Both.
Both, okay. So make sure. Thank you.
Okay. Any further comments or discussions? If not, I'll close the public hearing and ask for commission action on the rezoning. Case 05-200-00029. Citrus Ridge rezoning.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve case 05-200-00029, Citrus Ridge rezoned from AU District to R16. And to also include the stipulation for disclosure of proximity to commercial property to those residents within that area.
Okay, the rezoning also includes the portion of the property to C1?
It does.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Second. I have a second from Ms. Osborne. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. The second item is the preliminary plat. Does staff have anything to add? Rick, do you have anything to add on the preliminary plat? Is there anyone that wants to comment on the preliminary plat? Okay. Entertaining motion regarding the preliminary plat. Case 05-500-00022, Citrus Ridge preliminary plat.
Motion to approve Citrus Ridge preliminary plat with 48 stipulations as presented.
Second. Have a second from Mr. Gelsner. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Our next case is a similar pairing of rezoning application and preliminary plat. Case 06-200-00007. Bennett Estates Rezone, a public hearing to consider a request to rezone 33 acres, generally located at the northwest corner of Saraval Road and Harrison Street from the Agricultural Urban AU District to the Single Family Residential R110 District. The applicant is A&amp;N Saraval LLC.
Chairman, members of the commission. Bennett Estates is located on the west side of Saraval Avenue between Van Buren and Yuma Road. It is bounded by Legacy Ranch to the north, Wildflower Ranch to the east, Curtis Commons to the south, and Canyon Trails to the west. The applicant is requesting a rezone from Agricultural Urban to Single Family Residential. The general plan shows this area as low-density residential, and the requested R110 zoning is consistent with the general plan. The subject property is surrounded by single-family residential and will not have a negative impact on adjacent property. The applicant is proposing subdividing the 33 acres into 53 residential lots. These lots will be developed as custom homesites and range in size from 12,000 to 18,000 square feet. This development is being proposed as a gated community with the main gate access at Saraval Avenue, which will be a right-in, right-out entrance exit. A second point of access is located off of Harrison Street to the south. And Harrison Street will be a future signalized intersection at Saraval Avenue and will allow left turns into and out of Bennett Estates. There are approximately four acres of open space provided on the site. These tracks provide large areas of open space that will be utilized for passive and active recreation and will include tot lots and remadas. Staff recommends approval for both the rezone and the preliminary plat. I can take any questions I might have at this time.
Questions of staff?
Katie, is there going to, on 63rd Drive at that southern entrance right north of Harrison, is there going to be a gate, an automated gate there along with a gate at the Morning Glory, Western Morning Glory Street?
Yes. Shall we talk about gates?
Talk away, you're doing.
I'm teasing.
Other questions of staff? Thank you. Is the applicant representative wishing to speak? Yeah.
No, I'm available for answering.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this case? Any further questions or comments from the commission? For staff?
Question of the applicant. You're aware of stipulation 17 that if you do not develop this as custom homes, that you are cognizant, you know, you're required to submit your plans, guidelines, design guidelines, all nine yards?
Yes, yes. We're fully aware of the design review guidelines and that would be stipulated to those.
Can you provide your name and address?
Oh, absolutely. Sorry. I'm Leandra Wells. I represent A&amp;N Saraval, which is the developer. And my address is 1810 Western Northern, Suite 89, Phoenix, Arizona, 85021.
Thank you.
But yes, we are aware of the guidelines and that we would be stipulated should it go from custom to either a...
go from custom to either a, like a standard plan or some kind of other residential.
I have a question of staff. Is this one of the sixteen memorandum of understanding properties, or is this just a straight zoning preliminary plat?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gelsner, no, it is not a part of the Westpac Emolde.
Okay, thank you. Other questions of staff for the applicant? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Last call for anyone that would like to speak on this proposal. Now I'll close the public hearing and ask for commission action.
Mr. Chair, to approve case 06-200-0007, Bennett Estates rezoned with the thirty-three stipulations as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second for Mr. Lux. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries on the rezoning. We have the companion case. Is there anything you would like to add on the preliminary plat?
Yes, on the preliminary plat, there's a typo. It shouldn't read fifty residential lots, it should read fifty-three residential lots.
Okay, on the agenda.
Yes.
Oh, good. Is the staff report on the preliminary plat fifty-three?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes, it is.
Is there anyone that would like to address the commission on the preliminary plat? Any questions of staff or the applicant on the preliminary plat? If not, I'll entertain the motion regarding the preliminary plat.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve case 06-500-0007, Bennett Estates preliminary plat, and I believe there are thirty-seven stipulations.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A second for Mr. Bay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nah. Motion carries. Next case is combined, two cases, case 06-600-00012 and 06-600-00013, Centerra One and Two Site Plans, a request for the approval of site plan for Centerra One and Two Mixed-Use Parcels generally located on eighteen-point-five-one acres and on fourteen-point-nine-two acres on the east side of Australia Parkway, north of Yuma. The applicant is Dustin Jones of Snell and Wilmer LLP. Mr. Cannon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. I'd first like to draw your attention to the map exhibit, which shows the location of the Centerra Mixed-Use Parcels. The subject parcels are identified as Centerra One and Two on this map and are located adjacent to the city's northeast city center quadrant with frontage on Goodyear Boulevard. The parcels are also located within the city center gateway overlay district, which is highlighted in blue on this exhibit. In addition to the city center, surrounding land uses included church directly north of the site, single-family residences located to the east, as well as a court home parcel that's currently under development. Located to the south is the city center airport, airpark, plan area developments, and located at the southwest corner, or rather southeast corner of Goodyear Boulevard and Australia Parkway, the post office. As you may already know, the ordinance that rezone the land known as Centerra contains a stipulation that requires planning and zoning commission and city council review and approval of any proposed development on the subject Mixed-Use Parcels. The Centerra PAD also encourages a mixture of uses on these Mixed-Use Parcels. More specifically, the Design Intent section of the Centerra PAD calls for integration between commercial and multifamily uses, either vertically within the same structure or horizontally across different structures. In addition to the requirements set forth in the Centerra PAD, the Centerra Mixed-Use Parcels are also subject to the city center gateway overlay district guidelines. And those guidelines, as stated in the zoning ordinance, call for features such as pedestrian plazas, courtyards, and other site design features that will promote pedestrian activity. I'd now like to briefly present the site plan of course in Centerra One and Two. The combined Mixed-Use Parcels will contain a total of twenty-three apartment buildings with five hundred and eight dwelling units. In addition, the applicant is proposing three commercial buildings located on the corner of Australia Parkway and Goodyear Boulevard North. Those three commercial buildings will contain thirty-three thousand six hundred square feet of commercial space. The commercial area will also feature a pedestrian connection that leads from this plaza at the corner that will join the commercial to the residential uses to provide some kind of connectivity within the project. With that said, this concludes my presentation. Dustin Jones, the applicant, also has a presentation for you tonight. Staff and the applicant are available for you to have for any questions you have.
There are any questions for Mr. Cannon? Okay, Mr. Jones. Thank you, David.
Oh, yeah, I have a question of staff. I'm sorry. In the document called the Centerra One, Centerra Two Site Plan Narrative, does the word emulate fulfill the requirements of mixed use in both the vertical and the horizontal component?
Chairman Horsman, members of the commission, I have to look at the narrative again.
It's on page six, it's in the third paragraph, it's about two-thirds from the way down, and the sentence says, "The height of the buildings was increased to emulate two-story structures in an effort to strengthen both the corner architectural statement and overall streetscape within the retail development." And my question is, the definition of emulate, does that fulfill the requirement of vertical and horizontal integration as far as a mixed-use development goes?
I'd still like to find that on the sheets, and I haven't found it yet. You said it's on page, Chairman Horsman, Commissioner Gelsner, it's on page six-thirds, thank you.
You don't have to answer if you don't want to. I mean, if you decide that you don't want to answer that, that's fine, I just throw the question out. I'm sure the applicant will try to answer it.
Chairman Horsman, Commissioner Gelsner, I always like to see the exact context of a word within the paragraph, and I hate to have to read the entire paragraph to see the context of it, but I think Mr. Bob Coons, our planning manager, would like to speak to that matter.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gelsner, I guess a short answer to the question is no, staff did not use this particular paragraph sentence in the word emulate in our finding to say that it met the intent.
Thank you. Mr. Chair.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Dustin Jones with Snell and Wilmer on behalf of the developer of this project, Fairfield Residential. And accompanying me tonight is Karen Keith with my office, Snell and Wilmer, has worked extensively on this project, and also Ed McCoy, who's the Vice President of Development with Fairfield. Wanted to definitely restate staff's discussion about the uniqueness of this project coming before you. It's an exciting time for the city of Goodyear to have additional development continue to occur near the city center. This commission and the council has for a long time envisioned development to really catalyze the development of the city center, and we feel that the project that we have before you, the Fairfield development, is going to be one that's going to bring the people, that's going to bring the life, additional life into the city center. To give you a little perspective, as staff has indicated, the site before you, this is a site plan that's coming before you. The zoning occurred a few years ago, and in that zoning, as staff has indicated tonight, one of the, because of the particularities of the property and because of its proximity to the city center, there was a stipulation that was added to that zoning case that this commission approved that would require the site plan to come back to you for that additional attention to the detail. Because in the zoning application, it was designated as a multi-use area, and the multi-use has been evolving over time as different developers have acquired the pieces in that multi-use area. As staff has indicated, on the northern side of this area, there is a church that was developed on the site, there's some future court homes to the east of our site, and then within our development, this Centerra development that we have, we have both the apartment rental residential, as well as the commercial that's integrated into our site. And staff has worked very, very diligently with us to meet the intent of the PAD application, the requirements of that application to have a development that was pedestrian-oriented, that was a mix of different types of uses. This is a language right out of the zoning application that would encourage these types of pedestrian-friendly, mixed-use types of uses within that general area, wrapping the Goodyear Boulevard area of the city center. It should be noted that the gateway overlay district that was adopted by the council runs along Australia Parkway, right down Australia Parkway all the way down to the city center. This project is not within the city center overlay, it's not within that specific plan, it's just within the gateway overlay that runs along the side of it. This time, because of the significance of the project, I want to turn the time over to Ed McCoy, who again is the Vice President of Development. He wants to introduce Fairfield to you. This is the first project that Fairfield has here. We're not saying we have another one planned at this time, but there will be other opportunities for Fairfield to come in, because of the significance of this property to the city and the city center, Ed would like to take a little time to talk about some of the developments they do.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Ed McCoy with Fairfield Residential. I'm out of our corporate office in San Diego, fifty-five-ten Morehouse Drive. We also have a local office at eighty-two-sixty East Range Free, excuse me, in Scottsdale. I did want to take just a brief moment to introduce Fairfield. I think it's, the chairman made a comment earlier, a lot of things that happen in cities and with development companies are based on relationships, and Fairfield prides itself on having good relationships with all of the cities that we do business. Within the Phoenix metro area, we've done developments in a number of cities, including Gilbert, Chandler, Phoenix, Avondale, Peoria. So we've been all over the valley for a number of years, and I just wanted to, again, outline who we are, and with the intent that we hope to have some more business in this town in Goodyear for years to come. We are a private company. We've been in the Phoenix metro area for more than fifteen years. As I said, we have a local office in Scottsdale. We're a full-service development company. What that means is internally, we have everything from site acquisition to development, which I manage. We have construction as well as management company. We do redevelopment by existing multifamily, we rehab it. We also do workforce housing, and all we do is multifamily. And I want to stress that we are not a industrial, single-family builder, we are specialists in multifamily. We do for-sale condominiums as well. We've been in business for more than twenty years, and to date, these numbers are a little outdated. We're close to sixty thousand luxury apartment homes. We don't call them units, I know that the term is thrown around a lot. These are apartment homes, and we pride ourselves on building a quality product that people are proud to live in, in a quality living environment. So we call them homes, they are homes. We also manage more than fifty-five thousand apartment homes in one hundred and forty communities at the present time. We do pride ourselves on the quality of our product, as you can see from the pictures, and I apologize if they're not a little larger. We build very extravagant clubhouses. We have, within each apartment home, we have full appliance packages, where we put in washers and dryers, dishwashers, stoves, micro, microwaves, refrigerators. We do create a living environment that people are very proud of. We've really, our bread and butter has basically been building and masterplan communities. We've been building, again, in this valley for quite a while. We've recently completed communities, and as it shows, Tatum Ranch in Orange Foothills, Spectrum at Valvista, Power Ranch, and we see the Centerra as another nice masterplan that we're going to be very proud of, and I think that the city's going to be very proud of as well. And we do recognize this property being a gateway to your city center, and we will be providing a very nice community. As you can see, this is, we do resort-style pools within our clubhouses. It's not unusual to have thirty to forty people out by the pool on a nice day on a weekend. We have nice seating areas for all of our residents. Again, the fitness centers, we have business centers within our communities. As it says, high-tech business centers, extensive landscaping, again, a living environment that people are proud of. We have full-time onsite management, twenty-four hours a day. Because we do manage them, we have an inherent interest to make sure that the quality's there and that it's adequately parked, and that we have enough amenities to get the rents that we project for these types of communities. That just is, again, just a summary of who we are. I will be here after Dustin concludes the presentation and be happy to answer any questions about our company. And again, we look forward to having a long and healthy relationship with the city of Goodyear, and that this is a project that everybody can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. As you can see in the slide before you, the property is divided into two different site plans. There's a Centerra One, which is the western property that is adjacent to Australia Parkway on the west and Goodyear Boulevard on the south, and then a Hundred and Fifty-third Avenue on the, or Fifty-third Lane on the north, northeast side of the site, and then Centerra Two is the one that's adjacent to Yuma and Goodyear Boulevard. As you can see with this site plan, hopefully you can, in your package, you have something that is a little larger you can look at. Great attention has been given to the fact, again, along Australia Parkway, this is the overlay district, this is the requirement that the buildings be closer to the street, address the street, benefit the street, and to create that urban edge along Australia Parkway that the overlay district requires. So you can see through our design of the site plan, the building massing along Australia Parkway, and you'll note the commercial that's there. But much attention has also been given, and much work has been given by architects and planners, to integrate the commercial that, yes, has to be adjacent to the street pursuant to the overlay district, but also be integrated because of the requirements of the PAD, that the residential and commercial be integrated, that there be an integration between the two. So you can see it in the space, too, given particular attention to the parking, the quality of the parking area between the commercial and the residential. And much attention was given to the landscape palette that would be provided there, the connectivity, the pedestrian connectivity, the walkways that would connect between the, again, the commercial and the residential. The residential on this site, much attention was given to being compatible with the neighborhood, the surrounding neighborhood to our east and the entryways on the site. As you can see from that pop-up that you just saw, the drive, much attention was given to the drive aisle as you enter the site, going north from Goodyear Boulevard and having the clubhouse with all of its amenities as a grand feature just to the north, just straight on as you come into the site. If you look at the orientation of the residential buildings on the eastern side of the site, that is one-fifty-third lane, and across the street are the single-family homes that would be facing this site. Much attention was given to the orientation of those buildings, and working with staff, as you can see, the shortest ends of the buildings are what would align that street there, so that the residents on the street, again, their homes facing the site, aren't looking at a huge mass wall, they're looking at the most narrow, the smallest width side of the building. You also should note that on the site plan, the buildings are, for the most part, three-story buildings. However, the buildings that are adjacent to the residential have a step-down, you can see that on the site plan, the end units are stepped down to two-story height, which is consistent with the single-family detached homes that are across the street, to again, provide the transition into the residential neighborhood. And also note the totlot that's also along the eastern side, the northeastern side of the site there. You can see the totlot as well as the turf area, the open space that would be essentially the front yard of many of those residents, the single-family homes that are across the street. These are the details on Centerra One. Next to this, on the other side of Centerra Drive, the property to the east, similar site plan, similar stepping down along the residential side, similar amenities provided, similar open space provided for the residents on this side, on the Centerra Two side as well. Much attention being given to making this very compatible to the city center and bringing the people into the downtown or future downtown for the city. We've met with some of the council members who have been very intimately involved in the city center-specific plan, and they're very encouraged by the potential of having a large number of people to breathe life into the services that the city center wants across the street within the plan. So again, in summary, five hundred and eight total residential units proposed for the development, these are the apartment homes. There's thirteen-point-fourty-four acres of open space that's provided between the two site plans, one and two. Here are some renderings of the architecture that would be provided. You can see these are the three-story buildings with the two-story step downs that would be adjacent to the single-family residential to our east. Note the building massing, as well as the roofline articulation. Note the building massing as well as the roofline articulations and wall articulations. Staff has very considered, has been very, very concerned with, particularly with multifamily developments, with the stairs. And the design guidelines require that they be enclosed, that they not be on the outside. There are stipulations that address that as well. It should be noted through our architecture, we've concealed those to provide a better architecture and better aesthetic feel for the development. Here are some other rendering, side renderings of those units. There's a three-story. With respect to the commercial here are, again, renderings noting the commercial that would be provided on the site along Estrella Parkway. The units, the buildings are single-story buildings interior, but they've been designed with a two-story height. Now, that's getting to your question, Commissioner Gelsner, but the two-story height to give it that elevation, give it that height along Estrella Parkway, that would transition into the city center, because the city center obviously has some height across the street. And this, the design of these buildings would give a similar height to transition that and give it, again, that urban feel. And this is just some rendering, this is the detail that would be provided. Should be noted that, again, the staff wanting to have pedestrian-oriented development even within the commercial, there is an activity center that's between the two buildings that's noted here, called out in the pop-up on the north side or on the top of the slide there, that shows the canopy area, covered area, with also some, potential for some outdoor dining between those two buildings. The commercial buildings could be, restaurants could be, other types of, neighborhood commercial types of services. But the outdoor and the activity center would provide the opportunity for some of that dining, some of the things to occur on the outside and, again, give it kind of an outdoor type of a feel, provide that life. Some of the other details with respect to the site is, again, the cohesive development between the commercial and the residential. The, yes, they're two standalone projects put in one site, and attention has been given by staff as well as the architects that we've had onboard with us to make these two cohesive developments. And much attention has been given to the street frontage on Estrella as well as Goodyear Boulevard. I've put together some other slides we want to show to you that, again, give a perspective, a conceptual perspective of the development. You can note on this here, the height that we've built in, again, being one-story units but allowing for the two-story elevation on the front of the buildings to, again, give it that more of an urban and attractive feel. Here, give you an idea of the future of the development. It shows, again, the raw land turning into, again, a very vibrant mixed-use, multi-use development on the northeast corner of the city center there, across the street from the city center. Again, appreciate the time that staff has given us to really work with them over the past year on this site plan, noting that it's not a zoning case, but a site plan, that the detail that staff require, the detail that's been provided by the architects and the planners involved in this has been actually a great exercise. We've worked over the past few months sitting down with staff to show them our designs, made multiple revisions. I don't know that we've had many cases before you, we've had four, I don't know if I even say maybe five, different submitted. Staff is smiling over there. But again, staff very, very concerned about this corner, wanting to make sure that it was compatible with the city center, and we feel like we've met that, and appreciate staff's recommendation approval of the site plan. It should be noted also in your packet that we had a neighborhood meeting and didn't receive any opposition from the neighbors to this multifamily development. Thanks.
Questions for Mr. Jones?
Mr. Jones, explain to me why the commercial is only one-story buildings and why, you know, these are not office lofts, apartment buildings, whatever you want to call it, that connotates mixed use in the commercial area?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gelsner, Ed McCoy is going to address that, and he also has the architect for the commercial here.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gelsner. I was remiss in talking about the commercial developer. We are, we have a strategic alliance with Green Street Properties. Green Street Properties in Fairfield have done a number of projects in California, Nevada, and Arizona, currently working on, I think, four right now throughout those regions. So I just wanted to put that in the record, and they are onboard to move forward concurrently with us on this development. The size of the, the size of the commercial obviously is going to be limited by what's happening in the area. There's a significant amount of commercial development on Estrella Parkway right now. The city center is already slated to have a significant amount of high-intensity commercial as well as other public uses. The commercial developer who looked at this property determined, based on what they thought that they could lease, that that size was what was the most efficient and the most productive for them. So that was how they backed into the square footage for the commercial. The height of the buildings, obviously, one story would not have worked because it doesn't meet the massing of our particular buildings nor the city center. So, working with staff, they did ask to have more of a massing of the building, more height to the building, and that's how that came about.
Okay. My comment, I mean, you know, most architects and city planners will talk about, you know, form following function, and here we have just the opposite where, you know, function is following the form because we need to have the form to comply with what, you know, what we want, and the function isn't there. And we have, I looked at this project and I thought, you know, I looked at the drawings and I read through this project and I said, wow, this is really cool, this looks like North Scottsdale, because I used to live over there and I know what some of the, what the apartments looked at. And then when I read about the emulated two-story building, and then when I looked at the faux chimneys and the fake windows and all of the stuff in the commercial, and I said to myself, this is not mixed use. This is three pods of commercial property with lots of decorations on top and a whole bunch of apartment buildings around the side of it. And until you change it and turn it into mixed use, I don't care if an artist sleeps on top of that, one of these office buildings. But as long as an artist can rent that building or rent that space, then it becomes mixed use. And if you put lofts up there with a bathroom and just rent them out as lofts, I'm sure the city will bend over backwards to make the zoning case for you. But as this stands right now, I am not going to be voting for it.
Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gelsner, I can respect your opinion on that. I also would point out that the zoning for the property allows for horizontal mixed use, and that's really the approach that we've taken here.
But I don't think, but, I'll let you finish.
My point is that I think that we've complied with the zoning and the fact that we do have multiple uses on the property. We have commercial and we have residential. It allows for either or within the zoning document.
I'm going to, I'm going to go back to the presentation that, I don't know whether Mr. Jones was on the commission at the time that Jim Petrie came in here and made his presentation on Centerra. He was the original applicant for the rezoning and the P A D. His concept that he presented that night was vertical integration. I hear people say, well, there's no market for that. Well, I think it differs. There is a market for it, and they're doing it in Verrado. The M B is doing it very well in the city center in Verrado. I don't know that they have any vacancies in those lofts up above the retail component. If you're going to build a shell, why don't you use it? It just doesn't make any sense. I had a meeting with staff and Mr. Jones and Karen Keith that showed me essentially the same plan here. It is not horizontally integrated. A walkway is not a horizontal integration to connect the two, in my opinion. Further, if you can flip this property, that tells me right there it's not integrated because if you, if it was integrated, you wouldn't be able to separate the two. Very simple. This should be a mixed use. As Mr. Gelsner said, these are two different uses that happen to locate on adjacent parcels of property. It's, in my opinion, it is not mixed use as it was intended. It does not comply with the, in my mind, with horizontal integration, and I'm sorry, I'm not going to be voting for it either. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, I was impressed when this came to us originally, and I remember we were all blown away about the excitement of the mixed use, and this is in it again. And I have to agree with you. I think that the, there's many good aspects of this.
Absolutely.
There are. I don't think we're there yet. And, and I, as Mr. Gelsner likes to say now and then, the way I see it is either you can be getting a denial or you can get a continuation. And that's kind of where I'm feeling myself.
I would echo Commissioner Osborne's. If you want to continue this and keep working on it, that's fine. If you want a denial, we'll be, I'm sure we can muster up the votes.
Mr. Chairman, I do want to take a few seconds to note the extensive work that's gone into the plan. As you noted, we met with you a few months ago and presented a plan that had a different layout. I believe there may have been another plan that may have been, an intermediate plan even before this one here. There has been significant discussion and working with the staff to determine what integration means. And we had a lengthy meeting with them to determine, just with the staff, when you say integration, do you mean move the buildings closer together? Because the reality is it's a horizontal mixed-use development. It's not a vertical mixed use with the different types of use in the same building. We spent probably an hour and a half with the staff trying to define, what do you mean by integration? Because under one, under one definition, it was, well, you've got to comply with the overlay district that says move your buildings to the street. So you move them to the street. And then your residential is on the other side, but we wanted you to integrate it. And I kept saying, well, when you integrate, in my mind, that means you move it closer. Staff kept saying, no, you need to respect the overlay district and move them back to the streets. So we kept separating the buildings, moving them closer. That discussion kept going on and on. And so we, what we did was we flew in our architects and consultants to town to meet with staff, and we met for, again, and this was a month after that meeting where we couldn't figure out what the definition of integration was. And we sat down with staff and worked out a concept that you see before you, that meets staff's requirement for integration with all the pedestrian connectivity between the two parcels, two pieces. One of the issues, again, that has arisen when we start talking about increasing the buildings to two stories is parking. You're going to double the parking requirements, which means you increase the separation between the residential and the commercial out on the street. You have to accommodate all those additional people there. So there, it's a, it's a complex discussion to define what integrating a horizontal mixed-use development. And we're not, and what we have done, so we've not walled the two up, we don't have a, it's not a commercial corner in the traditional sense where you have a wall, like on the case we had before you, before, where it's a wall separating the residential from the commercial. This is an integrated use where the people living in those residential units can walk over, can park, walk out to the restaurants, walk back to the, to the apartments, not have to hop in their car and drive around. So there is an integration that's been represented before you. It's not a vertical type of mixed-use development, but it is a horizontal mixed use. And again, we've spent probably five or six months with staff determining what integration is, and finally came to this resolution of what integration was with their assistance and, again, flying in the consultants to meet with them. So there's been considerable work to date to define that, and we feel that we've done that. I'm not hearing the support from the commission.
You're not.
And so, and what I'm asking is if you're wanting to be a part of those discussions again, we would do that. We came to you three or four months with some ideas.
We give you a very, very simple solution. Make the second story on the commercial real. Make it real, make it people-oriented, whether it's studios, office, residential, do something with the second story of those buildings. It doesn't have to be dense, you can make them large lofts so you don't have a tremendous parking requirement. But the bottom line is that you've, you've gone 99% of the way there. Go the other 1%, you got it.
So, Mr. Chairman, what I'm hearing you say is that you're comfortable with everything that we've done on the, on the residential units and the integration.
Absolutely.
The commercial piece, you'd like to have a little more of integration or elevation of the buildings.
Not elevation of the buildings. We want the second story to be real.
We want, you know, loft, put a skylight in it, give it to an artist, give him a cheap rent. I want to be able to see somebody walk downstairs and go to that restaurant.
We appreciate the comments, and we appreciate the candor that the commission has given us. Appreciate the candor that the staff has given us over the past few months. I haven't heard it as loudly and clearly as we heard tonight, but we will respectfully take a continuance tonight, go back and revisit our site plan and come back to you at the next opportunity.
So be it.
Is there any other comments from the commission so that we have the...
One final comment. I want, I would like to say that I think this is a great property. I like you, the way you've laid this out. I think this is wonderful, but it's very clear that we want to see people living on top of the retail space that's developed. If you bring that back to us, I'm sure this will fly through.
Could we be agendized for the next meeting?
If you can, if you have Plan B in your hip pocket, I'm sure that...
Wish I did at this hour, but...
I'm sure that staff will be happy to...
When is the next meeting?
17th of January.
Okay.
We can respond.
We're on that agenda anyway.
Do you want to continue until January 17?
Well, let's, let's, let's make sure we've got all the comments on the table and...
Yeah, I'm not going to be laboring anything that's already been said. I'm just, on, on the Centerra One, sort of in the upper left-hand corner, that's across from Retail Three. Retail Three, right, so right above that. Yeah, right there, that piece, I mean, I'm, I'm just somewhat concerned that that seems to be, you know, one of the major, you know, ingress and egress points, and yet you're putting parking spaces right there. I just don't know if you're better served by either moving that building all the way to the, to the north or just eliminating those parking spaces. I'm just, I'm, yeah, that row of parking there, I'm just... Yeah, it seems like those aren't going to be very functional as far as, you know, all the cars, no one could ever get out.
Right, yeah.
For people living there.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Lass, we'll take a look at that during the interim as well. Provide a response.
Any other comments or questions?
Monument in that corner? Is there a monument there?
Is there another comment?
Yeah, I think the question is signage of, at your, at your entrance.
Yeah, architectural feature there on the corner, all the way, you know, that...
This is the inch monument.
Go west. Right, that...
Yeah, that big grassy moa.
Or whatever you want to call it.
There's...
Yeah, right, but, but the, the space there, I didn't...
It's the mine, it's the activity center.
I know that we like to include architecture as pleasing.
No, so we like that, we like that feature. We think that's great. It's more the corner, the grass where the corner is, that there's nothing there that might be retention.
There are benches.
I don't know if staff wants to address, that's a street issue. Thanks.
Well, that's the, the corner clearer.
Base.
Look for the future.
I think Bob has a comment.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gelsner, the triangle piece at the corner that is shown on their plans, that is basically all white.
Right.
That is currently right-of-way.
Okay.
Street right-of-way.
Yeah.
At one time, in the city center plan, there was to be a curved merge lane, where that is not the current plan. I'm not sure what the disposition of that property will be, but basically, it'll be part of the roadway in some fashion.
Okay.
Any further, further discussion?
Just put the lofts in it.
If there's no further discussion, I will entertain a motion to...
Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue the Centerra One and Centerra Two site plan case to our January 17 meeting.
Do I have a second? You have a second for Mr. Bay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
We have five.
Yeah, can we, let's take a five-minute break. Yeah, can we, let's take a five-minute break.
Who wants to do a lake? That's gonna be my first question. Where do you get the water?
Okay, our next case is also a paired... No, two different cases. Case 06-600-00040 Canyon Trails Town Center Site Plan for a Large Retail User. A request for the approval of a site plan for a large retail user to be developed within the 91-acre Canyon Trails Town Center, proposed at the northeast corner of Yuma Road and Cotton Lane within the Canyon Trails planned area development. The applicant is Ralph Pugh Esquire, Pugh and Lake PLC, representing Vestar Development Company. Mr. Corrigan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Fisher members, Mr. Chairman, per your direction, I will combine both presentations to one side.
Here, that works.
Okay. You'll be happy. Starting with location, Canyon Trails Town Center is located at the northeast corner of Yuma Road here and Cotton Lane, about 91 acres. What we have surrounding the town center is to the east, we have single-family residential development within Canyon Trails; to the north, some proposed court homes; and to the west, you'll have a mix of commercial and residential development also within Canyon Trails. To the south, you have some existing uses of our restaurant, a contractor irrigation facility, and some homes going up also in Canyon Trails. And immediately along the east boundary of the town center, you have 100-foot-wide drainage and open space trail system. Moving along to the site plan, as you can see, Anchor A will be the large retail user. It's about 177,000 square feet. Also, a part of this is about a 10,000-square-foot garden center and also a 10,000-square-foot potential area for expansion of the LRU. The parking field is located to the west of the store, and you'll notice the east-west sidewalk connections, along with one north-south sidewalk connection. Those are the parking pods that are called for by our large retail user ordinance, what we came up with the applicant and developer during the review of the special use permit, and this parking field just is corresponds to what we came up during the permit review. And within that area, you have about 1,200 parking spaces, which would exceed our city requirements. I apologize for the glare, but these are the elevations for the large retail user. You have about half on top and about half in the middle, and the bottom is the south elevation, which faces Yuma Road. And these elevations are consistent with what was shown to council and the public during approval of the special use permit. What we're looking at are several tower elements, a mix of metal and tile roof materials, some colonnades, trellises, green screens, use of stone and brick. During review of the site plan, staff finds that the site plan does meet our development standards, the Canyon Trails design guidelines, and stipulations that were attached to approval of the special use permit. As such, we are recommending approval of the site plan, subject to 16 stipulations in the staff report, with one correction. In the stipulations where references the Canyon Trails Town Center Design Guidelines dated September 29, 2006, that should be December 1, 2006. Nothing has changed. This is the December version. I just had the wrong date on the stipulation. And finally, moving along to the plat, what we're looking at here is basically Yuma Road right here to the south, and then here's that drainage channel along the eastern boundary, just to orient ourselves. We're looking at 31 lots, lot sizes about 0.8 acres to about 32 acres. During our review, the subdivision did meet all of our codes and ordinances with our subdivision regulations, and we are recommending approval of this preliminary plat, subject to 21 stipulations. And also with the same correction, especially with stipulation number two, where it references September 29, 2006, that should be December 1. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my presentation. Staffs available for questions, as is Mr. Ralph Pugh.
Thank you. Any questions of staff?
I guess this could be staff...
Who's asked one?
Oh, I apologize.
Nope.
Staff questioning. And maybe did we've gone over this from previous time, but refer to my memory. The backside of this area that does have the drainage channel, then we have the school site and the park, is there gonna be fencing on either side of this drainage channel, either right behind the building or probably behind the homes there, but is there gonna be any kind of... So I can imagine what this looks like in the back of it.
Mr. Chairman, Fisher members, I think there's an exhibit here that shows it's a line of sight, but there would only be two walls, basically. Basically, you'd only have two walls, one along the residential side, and then another eight-foot wall that will screen the commercial center. So this area here would be of sufficient width to provide a safety and line of sight for people using it.
Well, you know, the really... The main thing was kind of the connectivity from the school or from the park if they're just walking... I just, you know, trying to see the unforeseen of people walking across there to the back of these buildings, and I didn't know what was blocking, especially since if you go to the circulation section and you have that as being the full truck, you know, driving, and that's why I'm just trying to make sure that we're blocking public people just walking through and getting hit by trucks. And that kind of leads to the second question is when you go to the pedestrian circulation plan, over at the car wash area, you know, you have that entire back area supposed to be for trucks, and I just would like to see how the ingress and egress is happening with that car wash site and that truck traffic, and then having pedestrian traffic all within that little corner. And that's what I... If you can help me out there a little bit.
Is this the part of right here?
Specifically more actually further south and north, whichever way this is going.
North is that way.
Okay. Up at the top. No. Keep going.
The east end. The east end.
No, up, up. There you go.
East.
There you go, thank you. Which way is the traffic coming? Is that just strictly a... Help me out here.
It's a right in, right out.
Thank you, Gary.
Oh, that's a...
And the truck is right in there. Okay, that's what I need to help with. Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. If you go back to the, I guess, the plat, where you divide it up into 31 different sites, could you explain how, I believe, Site 2 and Site 3 are, you know, Site 2 especially seems to have a lot of buildings, and, you know, how is the ownership, or is that gonna be a managed area in one... That's one lot, or is that gonna be subsequently subdivided, Lot 2, and then Lot 3? I mean, I understand, basically, we're selling off all the other lots to the people who buy the pads. Or I think that's what is planned.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, maybe the applicant could kind of shed some light on their business plan for this subdivision, if that would answer Commissioner Gelsner's question, I don't know.
Can we hold that for just one second? I do have one question. Stipulation seven regarding portable storage containers. Can you show me the screened-in area for the... On the site plan for the storage containers?
Mr. Chairman, that area there where the pen is, is the area where the applicant's proposing the storage containers. There would be no screening, per se, except for the eight-foot boundary wall that's located along an entire eastern boundary of this project. It would be just kind of like either a striped or hatched area on the pavement where Anchor A would know that's where their two storage containers would go.
Okay, so it's not viewable by the public?
It should not be, unless they went back behind the stores, which...
Understand that.
Shouldn't encourage.
And they're not... And they're subject to the permitting process in Article 8 of the zoning ordinance?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Okay. Mr. Gelsner's question remains. Mr. Pugh?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, thank you for the opportunity to be in front of you this evening. My name is Ralph Pugh, and my office address is at 1930 East Brown Road in Mesa. Pleasure to be here on behalf of Vestar Development Company with Mr. David Mallon here this evening, and also Trish Flower from KBRA, our architect. In answer to Commissioner Gelsner's question with respect to the preliminary plat, the site has been divided up into multiple parcels, creating various different ownerships of buildings and groups of buildings within the shopping center. The project will be maintained and managed as a unified group under what's known as a set of REAs, Restrictions, Easements, and Agreements, among the commercial users, very similar to what you would see in what we call CCNRs for a residential development. So there is a master declaration and a master set of covenants and obligations under which each owner must function, but we will continue to manage the overall operation of the center. And so the lines you see on the map, Commissioner, represent either a single building or groups of buildings that we would anticipate could be sold if we were so inclined to do.
Okay, so in essence, that string of buildings from basically Major J through Major A would end part in the shops area in the center is all in Lot 2, and that'll be either managed by you, but it will not be subdivided?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Gelsner, you're exactly right. Under this preliminary plat and a final plat that would follow, that's absolutely true. And those are the parcels, and there would be multiple buildings in the parcel you're talking about.
Next question. I want to go back to what the chairman asked, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I understand that there is the potential for Anchor A as a greater target or a target great land or whatever it's being called this week. Are they aware that they are allowed two mobile mini, you know, storage units outside and no more?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Gelsner, absolutely. In fact, the reason they're on this site plan is on the occasion that they need them. Frankly, they don't think they will, but to have them there and to have them part of this plan now is just thinking ahead, but they're fully aware of that.
Questions of Mr. Pugh? I have one question, kind of runs with the history of this project. Is there any need for us? We are in our relationship at a point where we don't need to stipulate the elevation package? Or are we on the same page that this is what we expect and this is what we're gonna get?
Mr. Chairman, very good question, and gives me a chance to just briefly highlight what brings us here. It was indeed last spring when you, as commissioner, saw this, and what you saw was a request for a use permit for a large retail user. In conjunction with a use permit for a large retail user, a site plan and elevations are technically not required at that phase. You did see some elevations that you were not happy with. You gave us specific instructions about that. You expressed your displeasure and your concerns. Those were then translated into revisions to the elevations in particular that were shown to the council at the time they approved the use permit for the LRU. So your work in the spring brought us to where we are today with the elevations that have been conceptually approved by the council and will be finally approved with the site plan approval process. So that's kind of a long-winded answer to yes, you are gonna see in the project what you see there in that exhibit.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Other questions for Mr. Pugh or staff? Thank you, Mr. Pugh.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this case? If not, I'll close the public hearing and ask for commission action. The first item is the site plan for the large retail user. The second item will be the preliminary plat.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Case 06-600-0004 Canyon Trails Town Center Site Plan for a Large Retail User, with stipulations as provided.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second for Mr. Gelsner. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is Case 06-500-00012 Canyon Trails Town Center Preliminary Plat. Do we have anything else you want to add, Steve?
Yes, sir.
Any questions or comments? Anyone want to speak on preliminary plat? Hearing that, I'll entertain a motion to regarding this case.
Mr. Chair, a motion to approve Case 06-500-0012 Canyon Trails Town Center Preliminary Plat, as with the stipulations as presented, 21.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second for Mr. Pugh. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Tonight, we have, in addition to our normal business, a request by Newland Communities to present some information regarding density. Before I do that, I'd like to... If there's any member of the commission that would like to meet on a one-on-one basis with Chuck Kubat, who is the transportation consultant, or Newland Communities on their... To get kind of a big picture, why are we changing the transportation structure and the... That is reflected in their major plan amendment for their transportation system within Australia Mountain Ranch. Mr. Kubat has indicated that he would be happy to meet with any of the commissioners that would like to have that, and we can coordinate that through Harvey and Joe. So if you have need and have the time...
I would like to be at one of those meetings.
I think that was exactly what we were trying to get at. Thank you. Okay.
Hello?
Hello.
Mike Cathorne with Newland Communities, 2850 East Camelback Road, Suite 300, Phoenix, Arizona. I'm very, very appreciative to be standing before you tonight and to give you some information related to Australia Mountain Ranch. As you know, Newland Communities acquired Australia Mountain Ranch in May of 2005, and during... From that time until right now, and it's gonna... It's obviously going to continue, a lot of time and effort has been put into really trying to get our arms around a very large project. 20,000 acres is a lot of land to plan and to develop. Newland is extremely committed to doing this the right way, making sure that Australia Mountain Ranch becomes an asset to the city of Goodyear. And this presentation, we feel, is very important as it relates to understanding principles related to housing diversity within a city, and specifically in this instance, as it relates to Australia Mountain Ranch. I want to start by showing you a... Let's see if I... I want to start by showing you a graphic here. This graphic has become kind of popular within our office. What we've done is taken the planning area footprint of Australia Mountain Ranch and laid it over the top of the city of Phoenix. And this was done to try and show you the... And to get an understanding for the scope of the area that it is that we're working with. It's not that we're trying to reproduce Phoenix. That's not the intent of this. It's to show the landmass. You're basically looking at an area at the southernmost point in this exhibit would be Southern Avenue. Northern point would be Peoria Avenue, and at the widest distance on this, you're looking at 31st Avenue to the west and 27th Street to the east. Within an area of that size, you're looking at the need for multiple types of uses. You're looking at things such as hospitals, schools, universities, job centers. There's all sorts of uses that you need to have within an area of this size. A very important component in that as well is to have residential uses. And it's gonna take a wide array of uses rather than single uses to make the community work and function as it should with an area of this large in scale. This particular graphic here is a representation, and if you saw the staff report that was included in your packet, is to demonstrate the needs of meeting particular needs within a person's life cycle. The housing needs change as somebody moves through that cycle, and our goal with Australia Mountain Ranch is to have housing needs met within each stage. If there's a hole in that process, you tend to run into situations where you may lose people who would otherwise want to stay within a community because the community doesn't offer them housing alternatives, and it forces them to look elsewhere for those. In terms of dealing with the issue of diversity, it's important to understand what that means. And one way of looking at it is through this particular example, and this is speaking in general terms and focusing specifically on single-family detached residential, that it takes a mix of small, medium, and large lot product to be able to fill that life cycle, to be able to offer housing that's gonna meet the needs of people at any stage of life. And what I want you to pay particular attention to in this particular slide are the percentages associated with each particular lot category. I have some bar graphs that I'm gonna show you that help to benchmark where you would like to be. And this, again, this is in general terms, not speaking specifically to Australia, but it helps to understand the need for that diversity. This graphic here is...
Do you want questions now, or do you want us to hold off till you're done?
Why don't we take them at the end, if that's okay with you? This particular graphic gives you an understanding of the present situation as it pertains to Australia relative to different lot sizes. Currently, at Australia Mountain Ranch, you have two lot sizes, and that's it. You've got medium lot, you've got large lot. The smallest lot that you have out at Australia Mountain Ranch right now is existing, are 50-foot-wide lots, and that's... Those are all past. That's something that we want to try and change. We need to have more housing diversity out at Australia in order to make it work long-term. What this... What you're seeing here is it's gonna start to break down the number of lots per category. So you get a really clear understanding of what it is that we're actually dealing with out there present. It's important to understand the present in order to know what direction you need to take for the future, and that's part of the approach that we're working towards here. This is how those percentages break out in comparison to the housing diversity model that I showed you earlier. This is how it demonstrates in terms of a bar graph. The red bars and then the hatch portion at the end, that's the optimal range that you want it, that you would want to be able to meet in general terms. Again, not specific to Australia. We want to determine what that is, what that mix is, so that it fits in with the community. But it's an understanding of the type of mix that you ultimately are gonna want to be able to see within a community. Okay, we're now gonna move south into our present planning and development area, which for the city of Goodyear would be termed Villages 7 and 9. the city of Goodyear would be termed Villages 7 and 9. As a marketing term, we refer to it as Montecito. Montecito is made up of three phases, and those, okay, there's the area of Montecito with our first phase, nine parcels, there's five builders that are in various stages of design review, both with Newland right now, as well as with the city of Goodyear. Phase two, and then the major portion of it is phase three. This gives you a breakdown of phases one and two, the number of units, and again, showing you percentages related to the lotting as it exists currently based on the PAD. Again, breaking it down by bar graph, being able to compare it directly against the ranges that, you know, we would hopefully like to hit, you can see that we're not, we're not meeting those ranges, and so there's, you know, it's, what this is hopefully demonstrating is a lack of diversity out of Estrella at present. This is, this is showing you phase three, because really, phase three is Newland's first opportunity to start to make changes with Estrella and get to a balance point. The key in all of this is creating a balanced community. Montecito was, or Villages 7 and 9, were already on the books, it had been approved at the time of the acquisition, and we're in various stages of acceptance in terms of plattes, and our first opportunity to start making an effort towards changing things has been, or phase three of Montecito. Looking specifically at phase three, you see a major distortion in those numbers, where it's heavily influenced with large lots. And, you know, I think this is also, this is also reflective of, I guess, the misunderstanding at the time that the city was only requiring 60-foot wide lots, where that was an objective statement that was made, and it was actually part of the PAD. It also followed up by stating that there were exceptions allowing for product of a smaller nature, if the product was both innovative and alternative, that being subjective. You know, we feel that we want to, we want to be able to work towards that by, at some point, hopefully this summer, coming back to with a PAD amendment to start adjusting phase three, so that we're working towards more of a balance in offering you product that will meet that innovative and alternative criteria. Creating balance is, is a, this is a model that we've pegged to help understand what is necessary to get that balance. You have to, you have to look at it in terms of all of these components, being diversity, density, and design. They work together, and at any point, if you pull one of those out, the model breaks down. It's necessary for all of those to be present, so that it works and you get good quality land planning, as well as product planning, related to, related to the community. What we, one of the things that we did is we undertook an exercise to start to look at what we could do with Montecito Phase Three to help us work towards getting to a balance point. What you're seeing before you is a conceptual land plan that starts to try and implement those principles, and hopefully start to create some balance and be able to offer products other than, than large lot products. Again, this was an exercise, and this is conceptual, but it gives you an idea of where we would like to go, where Newland would like to go in terms of not only land planning, but also product types. Based on that land use plan, this starts to break down and show you what happens in terms of creating a balance. We're starting to get in those ranges to where the products are balanced, and we're being able to hopefully offer product segments that will allow for us to start meeting the needs within that life cycle that I mentioned earlier. I wanted to give you some examples of product that we used in that exercise as it related to the site plan, and what you're seeing, you're going to see in a series of slides, are actual product based on, based on lot sizes, and then the bottom left-hand corner, that's part of the site plan in Montecito Phase Three that actually has all of the different product components, so it was easy to show that in relation to the products itself. This particular product is a 34-by-85-foot product, 34-by-85 being the lot size, and the important thing to point out as in reference to this particular product is that this is a, this is a rear-load alley product. One of the challenges that you have in terms of design, as a product starts to narrow, and this is, this is a major concern for a lot of municipalities, and frankly, it's a concern for Newland as well in terms of design, as the lot shrinks, if the garage stays close to the street, the garage stays the same size, but is then out of proportion with the livable space in the home, which creates that garage dominant effect. And when the, when an alley is able to be used, what it does is it puts that garage to the back and allows the architecture to actually address and face the street. So it gives a much better presence and gives you a much cleaner, nicer look on the street. This next product, this would be the 45-by-90. And typically, this is called a two-pack, where one garage is back, one garage is forward, and what that, what that does is, again, thinking in terms of the garage as it relates to the design, it's, it's an effort to try and de-emphasize the garage in the design and the architecture of the home, so that the focus is on the home and the living space, rather than the garage. It's trying to bring living space forward and allow that to be the focal point, rather than, rather than the garage. Next is a 50-by-100. This is a product, and in fact, all three of these homes have three-car garages in different configurations, either with a one-car side turn or a two-car side turn, but again, trying to de-emphasize the garage in relation to, in relation to the home and the architecture. And then lastly, this is a, this is a 60-by-90 product, so it's a wide shallow product, allowing, allowing the architecture to be at full scale in comparison to a, you know, a 60-foot, you know, 120-foot wide lot, but from a lifestyle perspective, and this is another important point to make as it relates to housing diversity, it's not only about need, but it's also about choice. You know, the two largest demographic markets in terms of housing are baby boomers and Gen Xers, who, you know, a lot of, you know, economic, financial studies are saying that they don't, they want alternatives. And so ultimately, it's about being able to offer choice, as well as filling those needs. And for somebody that needs more square footage, but they don't want the big lot for maintenance purposes or for other reasons, this gives them an alternative to, you know, the standard conventional 60-by-120 situation. Design is critical in this process, and I wanted to, I wanted to give you an understanding of part of what Newland Communities has done in working with city staff to help in terms of what happens with design implementation. This particular graphic is showing a hierarchical relation of the design guidelines, you know, at the city level, going up to a village level, and showing that it's dealing with things at a general to a specific level. We've worked extremely hard with city staff to implement a program and a system that allows very close cooperation in working with the home builders going through the design review process, and layering that process so that it works with this hierarchy and doesn't put the city in a position where they're having to do the heavy lifting or playing the heavy with the home builder. That work is done with Newland Communities in the designer view process that happens internally, so that once it gets to the city, the heavy lifting has been done, and they're extremely happy with the products that are coming in. If you talk to them about the process, and I would invite you to do so, it's something that we've worked hard at, and it's worked extremely effective. And in terms of what you're going to see in Montecito, I know that you're going to be extremely happy with the, with the homes that are going to be built, it's going to be very reflective of the cooperation that's occurred. Now, when that time comes, where we come back in and we're talking to you specifically about a PAD amendment, these are some of the things that that PAD amendment will hopefully be addressing and things that you're going to need to consider, and I wanted, I wanted you to be aware of what that would consist of. It's an important process, because, you know, Newland Communities wants to, wants to do this in a manner that we're creating the best Estrella possible, and that Estrella is going to need to have, it has to have housing diversity, but we want to go about it the right way. We want to do it in partnership with the city, so that the city can rest assured of what they're receiving, and that that housing diversity is an asset, not only to Estrella, but to the community and the city as a whole. That concludes my part of the presentation. Again, I thank you for the opportunity of doing this. I'm hopeful that this was helpful and beneficial to you, and if you have questions now, I'm happy to take it, and frankly, if you have questions about other things related to Estrella, we, you know, we have a, we have an Estrella posse here tonight, so there's a lot of questions that could be answered, so I'm, I'm ready to take your questions.
Mr. Gilzer?
All right. Alley's, who, is the city going to own the alleys, or would they be common areas owned by an HOA? And the question I'm really leading up to, we've implemented a new automated trash collection system, and the question is, are the alleys going to be, you know, compliant with, you know, a large garbage truck, two large garbage trucks going every down, up and down every one of these alleys, doing recycling and doing trash?
I'll answer that question in two parts. The first part is, there's going to have to be a lot of discussion and dialogue with the city as it relates to alleys. Alley's is kind of a conflicting issue in the city right now, because you have one document being the city's residential design guidelines that encourage the use of alleys, but you have engineering standards that prohibit alleys.
Right.
So that's, that's something that has to be worked through, and we're going to, we want to, we want to do what's going to work and what's going to work right. So that's, I guess, that's a to-be-continued item yet to be determined, but...
Do you have design guidelines for, do you have engineering standards for alleys in another community that you've built, so that you can enlighten our engineering staff about these details?
Yeah, we're going to work very closely with staff to help with that process, so that it, I mean, this is an important issue, it's extremely important, and we want to, we want to make this work. Now, the second part, I'll answer the question from personal experience. I live in a home that is on an alley at Verrato. One-way alley, 15 feet wide, I watch the trash truck, an automated truck, come down that alley twice a week, has no problems doing it. It works extremely well, it has to be planned appropriately, you know, I don't think we're going to have alleys that are that narrow, but 15 feet for a one-way alley works extremely well.
I'm assuming if a trash truck can get down, the fire truck can get down too?
We've actually had discussions directly with the fire department on alleys and to try and understand what, from the fire department's perspective, their concerns would be with alleys. The issues that came up were simply lot depths, side setbacks, and block lengths. They did not have a problem with the alleys, per se, because from their perspective, they would be dealing with fire-related issues from the front of the home, unless you're into a situation that's dealing with maybe a fire in the garage, but at that point, you know, if a fire truck, or excuse me, if a garbage truck is able to move through that as easy as I'm seeing, you know, in my daily life up at Verrato, you're going to have the, you know, a fire truck would be able to manage it as well, in my opinion.
On the small lots that you showed us, the 34-foot lots, do we have a issue with fences? Another, in other words, you know, if you have a 34-foot lot and you have either a zero lot line or a five-foot setback or whatever, and then the property owner wants to put up a, you know, the typical block wall fence, all of a sudden, we have small little lots with canyons, you know, where do you, where are we going with fences? Or how are we going to deal with fencing?
Well, I think, I think fencing works fine. Again, it speaks to the importance of design in the process. All the products that you saw were conceptual products. Our plan in working with Montecito Phase Three is, and this really is a bit of an unprecedented step, as far as typically, you're not going to see this, and frankly, we're taking this step, because we want to set the bar as it relates to the smaller products. Newland will be, will be commissioning the architectural firms to design and develop the products that will go into Montecito Phase Three. It's important to us that when we come back to you with that PAD amendment, you're seeing actual product, not just conceptual product. So those issues will be, will be dealt with and worked through, so that, you know, we can stand up here and give you the assurance of how that, how those products are going to work and how they're going to function.
How do you, on the smaller lot sizes, how do you, how do you differentiate them from, you know, court homes and things of that nature? I'm assuming that these are all unique, single-family lots that the people own free and, you know, free and clear, and then there's these common streets that belong to the HOA or belong to the city?
Yeah, you're exactly right.
I guess my, you know, you've answered a lot of my questions. I'm really glad to see somebody finally starting to think outside the box. I just sure hope that you can convince city council to run with this ball, because there are some real strong naysayers about under 60-foot lots, we're going to have trailer trash living there.
Well, again, I think it speaks to the importance of how it's, how it's actually done and the importance of the design. You know, again, it's, the PAD for Villages 7 and 9, like I mentioned earlier, is very specific in that it lays down that line with the 60-foot wide lots, but it also, it also offers up exceptions. In fact, I've got a slide here that actually, that actually bears that out. If you look at the except paragraph, it's, the way that I view it, and I've talked to staff about this, and they concurred, the intent was trying to invite creativity, to say, "Look, we're going to put this line in here that says 60-foot wide lots, that's the objective point at which most developers have reacted to and why you see a lot of the same stuff coming in." Because they don't want to go after the subjective, you know, innovative and alternative. It's extremely important to Newland and to the, frankly, to the health of Estrella, that we have that housing diversity, so we're willing to work with that. We want to go after that, and we want to show you what good design can do for a community. So I think, I think that speaks to the intent, and I guess what I need to do, and what Newland needs to do, is help remind city council that, you know, that, you know, that that's there and that's what we're working towards.
And then finally, we'll encourage you to put lots in the commercial area.
I would like to just get him to get commercial.
Yes.
That would be my key thing. Actually, though, you know, I am very open-minded about these smaller lots. I will tell you, though, that living here, mostly not in Goodyear, but in Phoenix, I've had homes where they've got alleys, and all those alleys are... had homes where they've got alleys, and all those alleys are, are dead zones that are overgrown with weeds and dirt, and there's nothing used there. And that is, I'm looking at my life here in Arizona, and that is what Arizona alleys are, and so you're gonna have to convince me that Verrato's idea that you live in is gonna be sustainable.
It's, it's my daily life, and I would invite you to come up and, and look at the alleys at Verrato. We're not gonna try and recreate Verrato, because Australia has a different character.
But you gotta convince me.
And, and you know what? Honestly, I'd, I would invite you to talk to Commissioner De Brockert about this. We actually had a tour where we went up and walked a, a few of the streets up of Verrato, and, you know, I, I think Commissioner De Brockert could actually speak to what he physically saw there, in terms of how, the alleys of, of your past, they're, you know, they're no more. I mean, it's...
They're paved alleys?
Absolutely, yes. They're, they're paved alleys, and frankly, I've got, I've got too many pictures...
Well, there's no way she could say no weeds either, so I would imagine that's...
Yeah. They're very well manicured, and, and frankly, they, again, they work very, very well when they're done right, and they're done appropriately.
Other questions? Mr. Bailey?
Okay, well, everybody's beating on alleys, I'm gonna jump on to.
Great.
My concern is, just like Commissioner Osborne's in the city of Phoenix, it's very clear that the alleys are poorly maintained. And they also are used for utility easements, holes, and everything else. And of course, the property owners figure everything behind the house is theirs as well. So, I think it's gonna be very critical to convince us that not only will the alleys be free and clear, not only will they be paved, but they're gonna have to be maintained. And, and you live in Verrato, that's a new community, your alley hasn't had a chance to grow into, so, so your experience is of a new community. But if you go into the city of Phoenix, you'll find plenty of existing alleys where I can't find a single one that looks like anything I'd rather drive my car down.
Yeah.
No, understandable. I think, in, in terms of, in terms of land planning and design, they've learned from the past, and, you know, I, I don't feel that, that negative connotations that you have with alleys are, are going to continue. They're, they're much better prepared, and much better, much better designed, and they function a, a lot better than, than in the past.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm gonna make sure, I'm sure that they won't do that.
And I promise you, we're gonna, we're gonna take the challenge, and, and we're gonna show you that they do work.
Okay. So then, my other question is that you're, you're talking about Phase Three, and I guess, I'm looking at EMR Villages Seven and Nine, which we've already approved, is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
And so, you've already begun development on those parcels?
Not in Phase Three, we haven't. Phase Three has not, has not been started. Phase One?
Phase One and Two?
Yeah, Phase One, we're, we're in development with those, those parcels are fully approved, builder purchased, and like I mentioned, all the builders are in, in a stage of either designer view, either with myself at Newland, or with, or into the city.
Okay.
And, or they're in with construction documents. We do have one builder that's in building safety review right now.
So it's only Phase Three that you're gonna come before us with?
Correct.
Which would be a change from what was originally presented?
Correct.
And then in the future, that you would then present those as new designs and new layouts?
Correct, absolutely.
Okay. All right, I'm fine with that.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple more questions.
The commercial question?
No, no, no. Village Ten, Ingle Homes.
Yes.
Senior, you know, fifty-five and over community.
Fifty-five and better, according to Ingle.
Do you, do they envision any changes based on this? 'Cause we saw, they had some pretty innovative products, especially the two, you know, the houses that, that had a common wall, and that, and the... Do, do you envision any changes coming through with them? And then, I guess the subsequent question is, this is leading up to different, you know, in the future, as more and more of Australia gets developed, and we actually do have commercial that works, we're gonna see more and more of this, you know, kind of mixed-use innovative type of, of, of development. Is, is that the goal?
Absolutely. I mean, we, we want, we want Australia to work, and if, if Australia, I, I shudder to think about Australia continuing down the road that, that they've been going down. It, it's, frankly, it's not sustainable to keep doing what had been done in the past. And we're trying to, we're trying to make those changes so that it does work, and it, it works with what's already there. Let me, let me answer your question as it relates to Village Ten. Ingle Homes in Village Ten, frankly, are an island unto themselves out of Australia. That product, that, that village was sold to, to Ingle Homes, and essentially sits as an island within, within Australia. They're their own entity. I will tell you, and, and actually, staff can attest to this, we have worked extremely hard with Ingle to raise the bar on the exterior design of those homes, so that it meets a Newland standard. We, we felt like, coming in, looking at what they were proposing to do, just bringing their product in from Maricopa, it didn't meet Newland's standard. So we, we worked them extremely hard, and I think, I feel, I feel very proud that we were able to get them to make some changes that is gonna make that village reflect what, what Newland would like to see for the community as a whole.
Must have changed their gates.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
I have, I have a couple of questions. Number one, with increased density within the third phase...
Right.
When we look at the overall number of units that were in the PAD, are we looking at increasing the number of total units for Australia Mountain Ranch? Or are we looking at density transfers, and as a result, maybe some more open space?
I don't think open space is gonna be an issue. There's gonna be, I mean, you know, historically, there's been, there's been a lot of open space out at Australia. As it relates to the density question, both Phase One and Phase Two, the density was, or the dwelling units per acre that were allowed for those phases, and the lot yield actually came in under what they were allowed. So there, there's, in essence, unused density that will, in essence, be pulled into Phase Three. So the intent is to, to use the density that is already allowed in the, in Villages Seven and Nine's PAD.
Okay. What, what I'm really talking about is the master PAD.
The master PAD?
Has a, a, a number of units, if I understand correctly. Are you going to be increasing that number, or are you going to be working within that number and just shuffling by way of making some density changes in upcoming villages or, or phases, working within the numbers that already exist?
You know what? I will let Chuck Kubat answer that question. He's, he's really been the leader with the forward planning, and, and could probably speak to that particular point in, in a little more detail than I could.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll defer to him on that question.
And I think the follow-on question, he may be able to help me with as well.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm happy to answer questions. I'm Chuck Kubat, also representing Newland at the same address that Mike referred to, twenty-eight fifty East Camovac. The, I think the answer to the question is that, from our understanding, that the master PAD, in terms of the numbers that are there, we're not adjusting that with this, with the, the change that Mike's talking about. Mike's talking about, basically, within the PAD for, for Montecito, we already have density there that we're simply trying to use, actually, that's already approved. And as a part of the overall planning for Montecito, for Australia, we'll be, we'll be coming to you next spring as a part of our master plan and, and general plan amendment for land uses that relate to transportation, a, an overall picture of where Australia is, where we are in terms of numbers of units, where we are in terms of commercial, employment, and all the other community uses and open space that go along with that. So you'll have an overall, complete picture of the, the build-out of the community as we see it. Because right now, all you have really is a, a general plan in very general terms in the South, and some more specifics in the North, and we're trying to bring more specifics all the way along for the whole rest of the community. If that, if that answers your question.
The, the, the follow-on question relates to where that density goes. As, as we as transportation planners know, especially when you're talking about transit, putting density at, at as close as possible to arterial intersections facilitates, creates a, a mass that then makes transit possible, and in some cases, if it's properly placed, creates a situation where people can walk to their destination and work, and that, that trip to work reduction, and keeping people off I-ten, is really gonna be critical when you're talking about being twelve miles from I-ten, fifteen miles from I-ten. That's, that's gonna be really difficult. So, is it, is it part of the, the, the larger plan to use these increased densities at locations which would may help support the densities needed for the transportation networks, particularly trans, transit service?
Absolutely. The answer, the simple answer is absolutely. As, as you know, since we've had a chance to talk in general terms about some of the visioning that we're doing, and, and kind of where we're moving, and what I, basically, what you've offered the rest of the commission, and I'm happy to do either one-on-one, or in some more of a work session. Commissioner De Brockert has already had an opportunity to hear a little bit of that as well, as a part of that tour of, of Verrato that Mike referred to. We also did a briefing at that same time, that we were hoping that all of you could attend. But I'm happy to come and do that, as I said, either individually, or in, in small groups, however you'd like to do it, to give you a sense of the, of the direction that we're moving. And part of that vision that we have for Australia really is a, a, a multi-pronged approach to transportation, and not simply just arterial roads, or, and the 303 obviously is a big part of it, as you heard earlier tonight. Transit, we think, is a very important component to making the overall connections possible to create the live-work-and-play environment that we talk about, and diminish trips in a variety of ways. So, one of the concepts that, that we've already shared is the concept of some kind of a trolley transit spine, that because Australia is so long north-south, and in fact, not exclusive to Australia, that in fact, it's an idea that links potentially the Goodyear city center to other parts, and dense parts of Australia. We think that the way we've organized the new land use plan, with the extension of Cotton Lane a certain distance to the south, helps reinforce that. And, and we're in fact, moving forward in our land use planning to try and identify even a corridor that we would maintain for not only future transit, when the, the densities and the number of people are sufficient to support that, but also the interim steps, the use of, and encouragement of electric vehicles. The idea as a part of an overall transit strategy that we have not simply trolley, because that, that's one piece of a component of a transit system, but even some circulator loops that bring you back to the trolley. So there's a way that you get transit integrated into, into individual communities or neighborhoods that we have to some degree on, again, on the, the major streets, the collector streets, to allow people to come back to, to transit locations, that also then become opportunities for the commercial that is also walk-to, and more dense, and live-above, and other things like that. So it's kind of a, a whole package of ideas that we're working on, that include a lot of emphasis on sustainability as well for this community. Sustainability in the large sense about, about nature, and integration of nature, and not just the, the lot size and sustainability from a life cycle point of view, but also from a natural environment point of view. So there's a number of things that we're working on, and so we, we welcome the opportunity to sit down with whomever wants to do that, and, and help you understand where we're going.
Thank you. Any other questions?
In a previous regime at Australia Mountain Ranch, the city council approved about six or seven rotaries, otherwise known as traffic circles. And are we gonna be revisiting that issue, or is that something that's incorporated in your thoughts? Or where are, or is this like, "Oh my God, I didn't know I had them approved"?
Well, we were, we understood that there was some interest in, on our part, first of all, in the previous, the previous ownership, first of all, and then at, at various, various levels of interest at the city in that. And Newland continues to be interested in roundabouts as a way to manage traffic movement at especially collector-level intersections, and in some cases, arterial-level intersections as well, depending upon numbers of lanes and levels of traffic. Because it really allows you to control traffic early on in the life of a community when you don't have the warrants for signalization yet. And it's a much safer approach to some of that circulation. So Newland is basically supportive of that. We, we're moving in that direction at the front door to our Montecito project, which Mike's talked about. But because of the speed of things moving, and where the engineering was, and the decisions that needed to be made, as well as our own understanding that there was some reticent yet, reticence yet on the part of Public Works and other things to move forward with that, we were, we were internally encouraged that we needed to move forward more quickly than those could be resolved, and so we did. And therefore, we abandoned, at the time, the roundabout at the front door to Montecito, for example. We would like to continue to come back to those at the key places that they make sense in the rest of the master plan. You probably won't see them in our land use plan because of the scale of it. It's really at the level of, of now a individual piece of the community that will be able to determine whether the traffic allows for that to happen. But we are, as Newland, and I'm not sure where you stand on that, but as we as Newland are supportive of the use of roundabouts, and would like to see them in the appropriate locations.
Oh, you'll hear where I stand on it as soon as I nail the city manager.
Oh, well, I, I certainly wasn't trying to set up anybody.
Oh, that's okay. Can I ask the city manager a question?
That's up to the city manager.
Well, you were here, so I might as well...
Yes, sir.
It, it seems like we have some engineering issues, and I know we have a new director of engineering. And so, would it not be wise that we have a project of some kind of alley standard, some kind of alley standards that move forward, and also some type of roundabout that moves forward? Because the roundabout thing was three years ago, and, and if I remember correctly, we approved five of them. And to, to find out that all of a sudden, we have nothing, you know, because engineering says we can't do it, except they're built in Oregon, and they're built in Litchfield Park. Not that they did a very good job in Litchfield Park, but they did do a good job in Oregon and Salt Lake City, where I've driven out of. So I guess my, my charge to the city manager as a commissioner is, please, let's push those engineers.
Was that a question?
No, I think it was a...
Greg, you're up here to solicit.
Well, I wanted to make sure it was on the record.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Gelsner, I believe that there are opportunities to take these initiatives, take these new ideas, and advance them. And I've been privileged to participate in one of the tours out to Verrato, to see the very alleys, and to see the conditions, and where it does or doesn't make sense to have a fifteen versus a twenty versus, I think, a twenty-three is roughly one of them that's been talked about in terms of alley widths. As it relates to the roundabouts, we, we very much see that they can be appropriate in certain locations, that they, I, I think we're gonna have a great test, a great opportunity with Cotton Lane Bridge. with Cotton Lane Bridge coming forward, uh, that it has been indicated that there will be a substantial amount of traffic that's gonna be handled by a roundabout. And eventually that roundabout will probably have to go away on a strip parkway and you'll have a flyover based on, uh, the traffic volumes and everything that are indicated, a great separation. The, the efforts of roundabouts, the efforts of, uh, dark sky, the efforts of small lots, the efforts of work, workforce housing, I think all become part of an integration of quality of life. And it is, are bringing forward new people, new energies and our, our existing staff has been trying to labor with inputs from different parties as to which directions to take. But I think there is a renewed spirit to look at all these different approaches and to give them an equal weight, bring them forward. I, I think that specifically on the roundabouts, a roundabout was built in Arizona and suddenly it, it was under fire by ADOT. Uh, ADOT didn't take a shot out at the, the community took a shot out at Deer Valley or Happy Valley. And so they had to go back in and re-engineer, redesign it, but it seems to be functioning now. So it's like anything else, until a community has actually experienced something, why do you wanna try it? You know, if, if, if we continue that attitude, we will continue to drive, um, cars instead of using transit. So a lot of the comments that have been shared by the Commission are, I think are emboldening the development community step forward. And I think that we have to graciously join them in that process or, and aggressively join them in that process and say, why not? Because they're the ones that are taking the biggest risk. They're having to finance it upfront. And what we have to be able to do is, uh, ensure that we can sustain it at the end of the day, which is the, the operation and maintenance side of the house.
Thank you.
But, yes.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you for being here.
My pleasure. Uh, as I was, uh, telling several others, this was our evening to do rotary food boxing and, so I decided I better come over here and see how you guys were doing and you're doing quite well and continue.
My, my kids are there. They were doing the boxes.
There's a, there's a lot of kids there, I tell you.
My whole team.
They're very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Other questions?
Yes.
Regarding...
Chairman Horsman? I'd like to, uh, Michael mentioned earlier about, um, hospitals and, uh, other community uses in, in, uh, your new, uh, plan. Are you bringing forth, uh, earlier I asked about seven and nine, obviously, but is it your intent to bring forth an entire revision to the, to the EMR plan and in that plan provide, uh, some insight as to what this quality of life and this, this trifle diversity, density thing all means in terms of, uh, living in that area?
Well, again, when you, when you look at, and I think that's why the graphic overlaying the footprint over Phoenix was important. You, you have to think about everything that goes into a landmass of that size and all of those, all of those points are being taken into consideration as it relates to, to, uh, you know, drafting a new and improved land use plan for Australia. Um, again, Chuck can speak to it more specifically cause he's, he's in the trenches on that. But the, you know, the, the general comment I would make is yes, those things are important and, and are, are at the forefront of making that plan work.
Okay. Well, I, I'd like to hear from Chuck, but I also wanna ask, when, when can we expect to see this plan?
Well, I think as Chuck mentioned earlier, the, the plan is to, uh, come in with a general plan amendment dealing with land uses next year.
Okay.
Obviously there's, you know, there's the issue of, you know, dealing with the, the traffic or the transportation GPA first, but, you know, that, that's, that's our intent is to deal with, uh, a GPA dealing with land use, uh, uh, next year.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and just to follow on specifically, uh, you have a deadline of April, April first, I believe, for the GPAs, uh, to come, to come to the city to be heard that, that, in that year. And that's our intent is to, where we've been planning, uh, this year in response to our thinking about transportation and transit and all of those and then taking those ideas further forward with land uses and that's what we've been working on, uh, internally. And now we're, now we, we have enough information, we think, about the land uses that we can start to put together a, uh, a cogent presentation of that for a general plan amendment, um, for submission next spring.
And, and have you had discussions with, uh, hospitals and colleges for possible placement?
Well, some of those kinds of things are really placeholders for the future. What we're trying to do is reflect the fact that we have those kinds of uses in, in the plan, uh, because of the state, of the kinds of things that Mike observed, that it takes all of those kinds of uses in a full-service community. And we've embraced, uh, an idea that Stephen has, uh, brought to us that, you know, Australia is a part of Goodyear and we want to extend this concept of, of how we make an integrated city, uh, here with Australia being a, a big part and specifically being a big part and a focus to what is now being called as a name that we actually started in this planning process of the, um, Sonoran Desert Valley or Sonoran Valley, uh, in reference to the National Monument and giving a name to this whole place, this whole area of development of, of, of Goodyear that will be in the future. And, uh, we think that the, this, uh, Australia will be a real focus for that area, but it won't be the only thing going on down there, obviously. Uh, there are, there are other lands adjacent to us and other needs adjacent to us, um, but we need to be thinking about that as a, as a regional view, which is why we've been discussing with staff, regional thoughts about transportation and circulation, not just Australia mountain thoughts about circulation, but how do we accomplish this at a regional level too?
Okay, well, I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Other questions?
I, I have one statement. As somebody who served on the general plan commission, committee, whatever, in oh-two and oh-three, and I think Mike was at several meetings or might've been on that committee, I'm not trying to remember, but, but I gotta tell you, the, the plan that Australia handed us and said, this is what we want, we basically looked at it and said, well, this doesn't have a lot of thought, but, you know, it's not gonna happen in the next five years and we'll be able to update it anyway. So thank God, somebody is working to update and actually think about a plan that might be a live, work and play thing. So I encourage you to be bold. Um, you know, the, the city council can, you know, alter their stripes when, when it's appropriate.
Thank you. Thank you, Chuck. Anything further for Newland communities? Thank you for being here and sharing that concept and we look forward to hearing more about it. Okay. Mr. Kraus, communication from the staff?
Just very briefly. Anyways, I can speak loud. Uh, December eleventh council meeting, um, I just wanted to report that, um, Commissioners Osborne and Martin were, uh, reappointed to another three-year term. Um, of course, that's effective, the end of January thirty-first. As well as, um, Bob Williams or Robert Williams in Pebble Creek was, uh, appointed to a three-year term to replace outgoing, um, Chairman, um, Horsman. Um, our January seventeenth meeting, just to remember, it's an organizational meeting where we have election of officers. We'll also do review of bylaws and that'll be Chairman Horsman's, um, last meeting. Um, it appears by the workload we have on the seventeenth, we need to have another meeting between the seventeenth meeting and the regular meeting in February. So we were looking at, um, possibility of February seventh. Uh, if that'll work for, uh, everyone, we could do January thirty-first or February seventh. We're sort of leaning towards February seventh and on, just based on distribution and workload. Does that work for everyone? These are both, those are both Wednesday evenings. I guess, anything else?
It's a good trick. Horsman is yours.
That's, um, that's all I have, unless you have any questions. It's getting late, so...
Yes, Merry Christmas.
Oh, yeah, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, whatever, happy holiday, whatever you do.